For a while, while, while.
California, here he comes. There's Chris.
Got to see all those grandkids and the grandbaby, the great grand.
There you go.
Is it that time again?
Well, I missed, I missed last year because of the pandemic, so.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, you must have doubled the vacation saves.
Yeah, he's always got vacations.
There you go. All right, there's Larry. All right, everybody, it is five thirty and this is our city council study session for May tenth, twenty twenty one. And we'll call this meeting to order. And per Governor Inslee's emergency proclamation, twenty dash zero five and twenty dash twenty eight. Stay safe, stay healthy. The state of Auburn is prohibited from holding in-person meetings at this time. City of Auburn Resolution five five eight one designates the city of Auburn meeting locations for all regular, special study session meetings with the city council and all committees, boards, and commissions of the city as virtual locations until Washington's governor authorized local governments to conduct in-person meetings. And with that, Theresa, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Jay Raj.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
She's excused.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
Great, thank you. Okay, council, we have need for an executive session this evening. So at this time, we are going to recess into an executive session, which will include the mayor, city attorney, senior city staff attorney, finance director, and council to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two point thirty point one ten subsection one I to discuss potential litigation. The executive session is expected to last twenty-five minutes. For this time, council, we can move out of our current session and log into our executive session, where we call the meeting when we're done with the executive session. Thank you.
We will call the study session meeting back to order. And we will move into our agenda items for council discussion. And tonight, first, our agenda item is ordinance number six eight one eight. This is our ordinance protecting the health, safety, and prosperity of grocery workers and general public during the existing state of emergency. We have presentations this evening, and there's one, Director Tate, do you want to kick this off?
Sure, I can, and really what I'd like to do is just provide some introductions and the, and then turn it over to the presenters. So last week at city council, during city council discussion, there was a request by city council to hear from members of the grocery industry as well as U F C W twenty-one regarding the hazard pay ordinance. So as is indicated in your packet, there's a, there are three presentations that are going to occur here. The first will be by the Northwest Grocery Industry, and that'll be about ten minutes. Second, by the Washington Food Industry Association, and that'll be about ten minutes. And then closing with U F C W twenty-one, which will be a fifteen-minute presentation. And I, I think I would just prefer to kick it over to the Northwest Grocery Industry first. And just ask as each presenter initiates their presentation, if they would introduce themselves and anybody else that might be part of their presentation this evening. And it might be useful to just hear So with that, I would just suggest moving it over to the Northwest Grocery Industry to start their presentation.
I I see the deputy mayor speaking. You're on mute, sir.
I'm on mute, I'm sorry. We just have to look at that little little red thing here. So what I was going to say is that perhaps council, we should hold our questions until the presenters are finished. Unless the presenters would like questions after each of their presentations. And either I can get a thumbs up or a thumbs down if you would like to have a questions after your presentations, or would you like to hold until everybody's done?
I think in the interest of how it was explained to us, we were supposed to present, and then the questions were to follow is my understanding, and I
Okay.
respectful of Jeff's request of that.
That is, that is what I the written directions that I provided to all three parties was an uninterrupted presentation so that they can maximize the use of their ten or fifteen minute slot followed by Q and A at the end.
That will work. Thank you very much, and please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I appreciate that, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you this evening for the chance to speak. I did have the opportunity to watch your discussion last week. And appreciate the interest in having some questions answered about hazard pay, both from the worker side and also the employer side. So thank you for the chance to come tonight. So you know whom I represent, the Northwest Grocery Association represents the larger retail grocery stores in Auburn and throughout Washington. I am based in Olympia, just so you know. I am here tonight on behalf of Safeway, Albertson's, QFC, Fred Meyer, and Costco and Hagan. Those are the stores that I represent, of which most of those are actually located in Auburn. I do want to be clear that as we as we talk about this ordinance, there's always questions, is Costco in, is Costco out? Costco is in because of the amount of food that they sell within the store, to your definition. So just to be clear, they're actually included in all the ordinances that have been proposed by various municipalities, but just answer that question. So that you're aware, as I present this evening, we are a largely union represented workforce. We have both the United Food and Commercial Workers of various locals and also the Teamsters are part of us as well. Costco is kind of a mix of representation. Some of their employees have chosen to be represented by unions. Some have not yet made that decision, and so they don't oppose unionization. They just have a mixed workforce. So just so you have some context on our workforce as we go forward. And that's important as we talk about the wages and specifically around this issue of the additional pay because we don't pay minimum wage in our stores. Our union contracts are above minimum wage, and they start with a wage scale that's agreed to by the employers and the and the union as part of our contract, which is open every few years, but then also can be reopened through that arduous union process that I'm not even going to pretend to to understand, but know that that the there is always negotiations that go on. I did send as part of the presentation this evening, the wage information I was able to get before the the quick turnaround deadline to make the packet, which includes the numbers for two of the Safeway stores in Auburn, as well as the Fred Meyer averaging for the stores that they have in Auburn as well. And you notice that they all fall at about nineteen dollars an hour. That is an average. It does not include corporate wages. So I know there's a thought that there might be executive staff and other staff in that number. It is not. That is actually at the store site wage paid. Are there employees that make less than that? Yeah. Are there employees that make more than that? Yeah, it's an average, but it is higher than the state minimum wage paid in King County. Additionally, we do also pay four sixty five an hour in health and welfare and an additional on top of that dollar fifty two for pension. That number can toggle a little bit based on our health insurance plan and on our pension plan, but that is an additional on top of that average of nineteen. So these are industries that we are proud to pay good wages for and pay union wages to our workers for that. Since the beginning of COVID and everything kind of breaking loose back in March of last year, I did provide you with a list of what we've done. I know that there have been specific questions about the timelines in Q and A. So when we get to Q and A, I can walk you through exactly what the timelines are that I've received from our employers. But generally, the hazard pay fell into two categories of additional wages, and we do not call it hazard pay because our stores, we do not believe are hazardous is based on the data that we get from the Department of Health. It is, however, we have referred to some of our stores have referred to it as hero pay. Some of our stores have referred to it as additional bonus wages, but we don't refer to hazard. But we did provide an additional two dollars per hour for most of our stores for several months. And then additionally, those stores chose to pay bonuses. And those bonuses have been paid up and even to this year were additional bonuses paid as of February fifth. So this the idea that we paid it for a short time, and then we stopped doesn't take into account the additional bonuses that were paid throughout the rest of the year as we proceeded through. Additionally, we took some steps to deal with some issues that have kind of come up, things like the loss of childcare. I know that several of our stores, because I worked on this project, attempted to work with local school districts to get school buildings reopened, working with classified staff and paraeducators to try and pay them by the companies to provide childcare to our employees when the childcare shut down. We ran into some problems with state law and regulations and contracts, but it was a consorted effort to try and get some available childcare at the store's cost to provide help. Additionally, we were allowing employees to switch shifts on the fly. And if they needed store transfers, and we could accommodate for that to get closer to home to take care of a child or an elderly elderly parent, we were doing that as well to try and ensure that our employees could get to work because we were asking so much of them. Additionally, we were paid, we pay eighty dollars, or I'm sorry, eighty hours of paid sick leave if there is a COVID positive, either an individual or a household positive. That is required of the feds, but we actually did that prior to the federal requirement, and it is paid. So they get eighty hours. It's basically two weeks automatic paid sick leave if they do test positive or have a household positive test for COVID. If they have additional complications, it is covered under workers' compensation. So these claims are covered either through worker comp or through our health insurance that we provide to our employees. So they are covered if there are additional complications. We are also providing paid leave if there is a contraindication for the vaccine, which is kind of the new issue that we're kind of working our way through. There's always something with COVID. And so in this case, we do have some employees that are having some some rough response to that second shot, and they also get paid sick day for that as well. As long as they need it to recover from that shot and be able to return to work. For employees that couldn't come to work because they had asthma or they were of an older age and are at risk population, we did protect their seniority, and we protected their health insurance so that they could come back to work at a time when they feel comfortable to be able to return and come back in and not roll back either on their health insurance or on their on their employment status. And that status matters because the longer you've been with us, obviously, the higher you are on our weight scales, and so we wanted to protect that. There's been a lot of talk too about PPE and the discussions around masks. We spent around eight hundred million dollars on PPE. That's a nationwide number, but you know, there's only fifty states. So doing the math, we spent a lot on PPE, and the challenge with PPE is a couple of things. Obviously, there's the barriers that don't change, right? The big plastic shields and and those kind of things, but the stickers on the floor is anybody who forgot their reusable tote back when we were using them, you put those signs up, they remember for about two weeks, and then they forget, and you have to re-sign. You have to redraw attention to things because people get blind to that. And so the PPE floor spacings and and reminding people to stand back unless there's a physical barrier, it is difficult to get customers to remember we're still in this thing. So we continually have to be evolving every couple of months to try and draw attention back to that PPE. I want to speak to masks specifically because this comes up quite a bit around the mask wearing. At the beginning of the pandemic, it was difficult to know how this virus was transmitted. And as you'll all remember, there was a lot of debate, do you wear a mask, do you not wear a mask? Even Dr. Fauci, whom I hold an extremely high regard, struggled with, you know, do we or don't we, and how do we do? Once it was determined that that was the best methodology, protect those around us because we wear masks to protect others, not necessarily just to protect ourselves. We provide a PPE to our employees. We actually followed LNI requirements and mask requirements for wearing masks in our store sites. The public still struggles, and it's been a year, and we all know this. But we have no backup. So Labor and Industries and Liquor and Cannabis Board, which are required to enforce these on the employer with our workers, do not enforce these mass policies within our stores. Law enforcement is expected to do that enforcement, but I'm pretty sure the city of Auburn PD has other things to do than to come in and in fast and and enforce someone who is refusing to wear a mask. So it falls upon our employees, it falls upon us, and it's frustrating. And we get that frustration. But we had three county sheriffs who announced that they were not going to enforce mass policies. So if your local law enforcement isn't going to do it, we're kind of stuck. So Auburn, along with a number of other police departments, continue to work with us. One of you cited about trespassing as kind of the solution to dealing with this, but there are stages that someone has to get to to get to trespassing before we can remove them. And that's a lot to put our staff through in order to get that individual removed. And we still don't have a solution to this a year later, except for vaccines. So I I think I'm getting close to the end of my time, so I will finish with vaccines. The path out of this is vaccines. The path out of this is to get as many who are able to do so to get vaccinated. We have offered to our employees, I call them bounties because I don't have a really better term for it, but we are offering cash payments to our employees to get vaccinated. As I said before, if you have a contraindication, we're offering sick days for that worker who may have an issue and need an extra couple of days off. Our in-store pharmacies, you can walk in and get those those shots now. You don't need an appointment, and as long as you're over the age of sixteen, you can be vaccinated. The problem is, we're still having a problem with getting our employees vaccinated. We are still struggling with getting those levels to a point that we're comfortable, but that is the power tool out of this. And certainly, our customer base is a whole second conversation around the need for vaccines. Four dollars an hour does not help with getting vaccines completed within our workforce because we've offered them a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, and it's still not enough to get our folks vaccinated. So some kind of path forward in that working with public health will make a huge difference in all of us getting out of this thing and being able to move back to what we know as normal, whatever normal is going to look like after all of this is over. So with that, I will hand my presentation over to the next panelist, and I look forward to your questions. You had some really great ones on the sheet, and I appreciate the the discussion this evening. Thank you.
So the next speaker up would be Catherine.
All right. Good evening. My name is Catherine Holm, and I am the Director of Government Affairs and Legal Counsel for the Washington Food Industry Association. There is a reason why we have two us two associations. And so Holly represents the national chains, and I represent the independent grocery stores. The independent grocery stores tend to be family owns, they're all based in Washington State, and it's throughout the state of Washington. And so we don't represent grocery stores outside of the state of Washington. Our stores are not sold on the stock market, and the vast majority only own one or two stores, but we do have some members like SARS who own more. In Auburn, Star Super Saver Foods is one of our members that will be impacted by the legislation solely because of their employee size. They have more than two hundred and fifty employees, but less than five hundred. Independent grocery stores on average have a profit of one percent. At the beginning of COVID, the profit did increase, which is when the vast majority of our stores also did the heroes pay. It was also a time when we didn't know how COVID spread. Our supply chain was absolutely bonkers, and we were unable to get products. The rush did stop, and our revenue then is now stable. And so our profit and revenue is the same now as it was pre-COVID in late spring twenty nineteen. I want to be clear that profit does not equal revenue. So if you go to the packet that I submitted, on page seven is a nice little infographic that explains the difference between profit and revenue as we think that this is a really important concept. Our revenue may have increased at the beginning of COVID, but our profit did not. On average, a standard grocery store employs fifty people with a revenue of six million because of all the products we sell. After expenses, which includes costs of goods, taxes, payroll, employee benefits, utilities, threat slash shrinkage, transportation, COVID costs, and if they decide to donate, what is left is the profit. And so one percent of six million revenue is sixty thousand dollars. So that means on average, an independent grocery store has a profit per year of sixty thousand dollars. And so this sixty thousand dollars tends to go to the store to improve the store or its bonuses for employees or whatever the store chooses to do. When the hero pay costs of stores like SARS, seventy five hundred to eight thousand dollars per week, which is thirty two thousand per month, that profit is now gone if the hazard pay continues for more than two months. On the advocates of hazard pay, they tend to, their reasons tend to be because of these two reports. And so the two studies are the Brookings Report and the British Medical Journal, the Occupational and Environmental Medicine. This is in the intense section of all ordinances that have occurred in the state of Washington. As it is, it is the same information that has been used since the beginning of twenty nine or twenty 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 one, excuse me, as reasons for the mandated hazard pay. So the Brookings Report relies on national data slash data that the chains are required to disclose due to stock market regulations. So again, not independence. And then the second study is the occupational and environment environmental medicine. So that's one study on one grocery store in May twenty twenty in Massachusetts. When we didn't know the cause of COVID, we were beginning the regulations on mask cleaning, etc. And so neither of these studies focus on Washington State, nor do they bring in the independents. You, if you look on page eight of the packet that I submitted, this includes the Washington State Department of Health. I think Holly did go into this a little bit, but this information was provided from February as that is the last time the Department of Health gave an in-depth presentation on COVID cases in the grocery industry alone. So this does not include anybody else. Since then, as of May fifth twenty twenty, we have two hundred and twenty outbreaks in the grocery industry in Washington State. So an outbreak means two or more positive cases. The cases have symptoms within fourteen days of each other, and there is plausible evidence that the transmission occurred in a shared location other than the household. So moving on, we also want to be very open that we believe that grocery stores were very proactive when it came to COVID. And, you know, just like Holly had mentioned about masks and things like that, we were ahead of the curve. We had best practices in the government mandated requirements. On our store, for our stores, we actually encourage mask wearing, and we at the beginning did do much more cleaning and sanitation and the Plexi class little things before any government guidance was actually issued. And so in the document that I submitted, it kind of goes into into all the things that we've done. But it's, I do want to kind of talk about that because they are important, and it's things that we did. So it's thinking, so we actually are still providing free face masks and other PPE. We did the Plexi glass, we did this social distancing, strong cleaning protocols, providing special shopping hours for older and medically fragile populations. We actually had stores who upgraded their ventilation systems because some of the newer ventilation systems are actually safer versus some of the older ones in regards to COVID, at least. And we did increase sick leave, healthcare benefits. And we also did do the providing employee pay incentives, gift cards and other rewards. It, I know that not SARS, but another grocer, they actually pay their employees five hundred dollars if they get vaccinated. And that's a store in an area where it is very well known for not doing doing any vaccinations just because of that's the culture of where they're at. And so it's something that they decided that they wanted to do, and that was their choice. Another thing that we did want to address is the potential impact on consumers when it comes to hazard pay. So for the independents, how our business model is a little different. So many times for the national chains, they get their supplies directly from the manufacturer. We tend to not be able to do that because we're too small. So we actually have to buy from a distributor, and so our costs are actually higher than a And so our costs are actually higher than a national chain cost may be. And so that means that when you have these increased costs, it actually, there may be fewer choice for, for consumers. And so if a store cannot support the increased costs, then they have several choices. Increase the food costs, less hours for workers or close down the stores. And so none of these are good options, but it is the reality. And our stores, they too, they do tend to increase the product costs. Because they cannot absorb the cost easily, but it is up to the individual store to make that determination. In fact, we did have some stores who are much smaller, who said that if they were, if they had to do this hero's pay. For a long period of time, they would have to close their store. Fortunately, they actually have been exempt because they were too small. And I did want to bring up, it was not included in the packet because I had actually sent it to you previously and I felt sending it twice was a little much. We have a model draft that I had sent to you last week. So that draft takes some of the information provided in the draft ordinance that you all created. Which is actually based off another model. And that, and it adds in things that we believe are necessary. So it takes up independent grocers as the advocates since the beginning have focused on the big national chains. The second thing is it actually lowers the amount to two fifty, because if you look at California, many of those hazard pay is actually at two dollars and fifty cents or three dollars, give or take. We also have a specific start and end date, which makes it easier for human resources to be correct for when they need to begin hazard pay. This also includes a look back to, to see the impact of hazard pay on the worker consumers and the store. And it is very specific on the employee, on which employees are included and what are not. So in order to make sure that management, truck drivers and those who are not based at the grocery store are not included. Because they are not considered on the front lines like the checkers are. This information comes from things that we think work best to get to the purpose of the ordinance. Which is increased pay for grocery workers and done in a way that makes it doable for us and for the national chains. Thank you. Perfect timing.
And then the final speaker is Carsten Wise. Carsten's with UFCW, so turn it over to Carsten.
Hi there, my name's Carsten Wise. I just want to thank Mayor and Deputy Mayor for the opportunity to speak this evening. I also just wanted to point out that I do have Monica Smith here. She is on the call and I will handle the presentation. But if there's any questions specifically about the stores in Auburn or any of the folks who work there. Monica is the rep who works directly with the, the members that our union covers in Auburn. So just wanted to make sure she had a chance to be here to answer any questions folks had specifically about those stores. UFCW Local Twenty-One is a union that represents about forty-six thousand members statewide. Primarily in grocery, healthcare and other service industries. So I just wanted to start, as most of you know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic represented a profound change. To our public health infrastructure, our so, social safety net and our essential food supply chain. Over the last year, we've seen a lot of changes in science, scientific consensus and federal directives. During that time, Local Twenty-One's hundred, hundreds of members in the food retail industry in Auburn. Have struggled to provide basic food and other necessities to the consumers in the Auburn community. It's been a really stressful time for our members. Significant portions of them have reported suffering symptoms of health depression, anxiety, things like that. Many of the workers that we represent or workers who do work in the grocery industry are lower wage workers. And while we know that hazard pay cannot by itself address safety risks associated with COVID-nineteen exposure. It can help our members cope with some of the financial challenges they may face as, as a result of being on the frontline of the pandemic. And the combination of stress and anxiety from the pandemic and financial hardships. Can be very, very difficult to cope with. One of the biggest arguments we've heard in different localities against hazard pay. Is that supermarket chains have argued that they are unable to bear the burden of increased costs with hazard pay. And that increased. Wage costs would force store closures. We, we know that this just isn't true. Over the past year, the supermarket industry has experienced record sales and profits despite increased costs associated with COVID-nineteen. And the slides in the packet that I will walk through now will just kind of show some of the, the facts and figures surrounding the financials from the last year for the grocery industry. I would note that the information that we have is only from public traded companies. So there will be an emphasis in this information on larger chains like Safeway, Albertsons and Kroger, Fred Meyer. In, in the packet on the second slide, it will show over the last year how there was a tremendous shift in how people consume their food. As local governments and state governments issued shutdowns. Food consumption switched drastically from being eaten, you know, folks going out to restaurants eating to having to prepare food at home. Government mandates that, you know, that forced this change shifted seventy billion dollars in sales to grocery industry. So we've heard a, a lot of frustration about proposed mandates that, you know, would enforce hazard pay. But we didn't hear a ton of complaints from the grocery industry about the mandates that kind of made these records profits possible. On the third slide, you'll see that. There was a dramatic, dramatic increase in volume of store sales. You'll see that Kroger and Albertsons over the last four quarters have had a sharp increase in. In the volume of, of products that they've been selling despite low margins. Even if your margins are low and your profit, you know, your, your volume goes up, it is leading to, to very, very high profits. On the fourth slide, you'll see that breakdown of the total profit for Albertsons and Kroger. You'll see that Albertsons profit more than doubled from about four hundred million to nearly one billion over just the last three quarters. Kroger's profits increased by nearly one billion dollars despite the fact that the company recorded a seven, seven hundred fifty million non-cash expense. For a change in its pension plans. I want to be really clear that these profits are after deducting COVID-related costs from early spring. So this, you know, we feel this really does dispel the argument that these hazard pay mandates can't be afforded. And this, on the fifth page of the handout, you'll see that Kroger in twenty twenty after tax. And hazard pay, after tax hazard pay and profit profited about two point five billion dollars. And the hazard pay cost was about three hundred forty-two million dollars. So even after paying that hazard pay that was only paid for a temporary period of time, there were still, you know, billions of dollars in profits recorded by these companies. So there, there just isn't an issue of cost here. And then on the sixth slide. In the sixth page of the handout, you'll see that Albertsons spent about two hundred sixty-three million, which was about twenty-one percent of its profits on hazard pay. By comparison, the company spent seven times that amount in stock buybacks during the last three quarters. And then one of the last things I'd like to talk about is, you know, we've heard that the hazard pay. If we pass a hazard pay ordinance, it will cause a, a sharp increase in cost of goods for the general public. But consumer index pricing information shows that. The prices, that companies were already raising prices at the start of the pandemic. In the eighth and final slide of the packet, it will show that in early twenty twenty, there was a very steep increase in the cost of goods. So what we feel this shows is that regardless of whether or not there is a hazard pay mandate. For grocery workers, these industries are going to take advantage of the moment and, you know. Increase profits or increase costs where they can, they are already benefiting regardless of whether we act or not on hazard pay. These companies are already benefiting from this, this pandemic in terms of higher priced goods. And that is just end of the, the summary for the slides that I submitted. I really appreciate the opportunity to, to present this information and happy to answer any questions.
Customer member Brown.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Yes, this question is directed at Carsten. Carsten, you just indicated on, in your presentation. That nearly ten times. The amount, let me see here. Ten times the amount of hazard pay costs were spent. On stock buybacks. Soon of about one point eight some billion dollars. Were spent on stock buybacks. What, why does a company buy back its own stock? What does that do?
To be quite honest, I'm not entirely sure. I think my understanding is that they can buy the stock back at a lower price than they originally. They can buy it back after turning a profit on it. But I forgive my ignorance on this, Larry. You may be able to fill in the blank.
Yeah, my understanding is that usually stock is purchased by the company to drive up the cost of stock. It creates a, you know. Supply and demand issue with the stock. And so it, it brings back shareholder value for the remaining shareholders. And usually triggers executive pay. So anyway. Thank you.
Customer member Sterns.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And, and thank you everyone for taking the time to, to come here and give us your presentations. Really informative. I, I am curious because we're, we're talking about. You know, bumping pay for people on the front lines. Just what, what is the median wage for frontline workers like cashiers here in Auburn?
So I, I'd be happy to answer that because it's information I included in your packet. On average for our stores and, and I won't speak, but our contracts are similar. It's about nineteen dollars an hour and then add on to that about a four dollars plus for benefits, health insurance pension.
Oh, thanks. Is that for, did you say that was for Safeway?
That's in the averaging for our stores, the Safeway, Albertsons, QFC, Fred Meyer. And Costco pays a comparable wage plus the four to five dollars additional for benefit.
We don't have a cost of here though, right?
No, you don't. I, I do think it's worth noting that other retailers that do pay minimum wage like Walgreens are not included in this ordinance.
Customer member J-Raj.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Carson, I've got a question for you. Why should the cities mandate hazard pay first of all? Why shouldn't it be from the state or the governor?
We feel as though. Passing the, the burden from, from one local municipality to the other. Isn't ultimately going to be the best thing to benefit not just our members, but grocery, all grocery workers who would be covered by this ordinance. We do know that cities have the authority to act on something like this. We've seen it be successful in, in other municipalities. The municipal process ironically tends to be a little bit quicker. So we see this as a means to. To pass legislation that, that benefits workers on the frontline. And speaking just from, you know, the union's perspective as, as an organizer. We, we are able to pursue this at local levels where we have organizing interest and power, you know, budding from our members. So we feel that it is, makes sense to pursue this at the municipal level. Because we can kind of follow the activism of our membership and into municipalities where they feel like they can move something to action. So we, you know, this, I think issue was brought forward by a handful of our members who are on our executive board. And really kind of took this issue to the city council. So since we have seen that the city does have authority to act, we just, you know, are, are following the, following this lead through. And in all the places where it's come up.
So there's only like about seven or eight cities. That signed on to the hazard pay issue right now. And the two counties, King and Pierce. What I see is, is a disparaging amount from two dollars to four dollars. So where is the fairness within those people? Because, you know, some people are getting two dollars and some people are getting four dollars. So if you went to the governor and said, hey, you know, make it statewide, it'll be fair, wouldn't it? The governor could do an executive order. I mean, couldn't you approach the governor and ask him?
I mean, I can't speak to larger conversations that like I, I'm not privy to the sort of information or discussions that like may or may not have happened with the governor's staff. From an executive standpoint. I know that if we're thinking about what is the, like, the best net positive that we can do for, for workers or for our members in terms of pursuing an ordinance. If we have the opportunity to pursue an ordinance in one city, because there is momentum from our ship. Or there's momentum from the council that exists there to put two dollars in their pocket, two dollars is better than no dollars, some, you know. I think you could also make the argument that the legislative process has been rather blocked down this year. Given all the, you know, the emergencies that are on. You know, the legislature's docket, so. Following this at the municipal level, we felt had the best opportunity to have the biggest impact for as many of our members as possible.
Okay, so one other question. Since you mentioned the activism, activism of the grocery store workers is what's pushing you guys to ask for this hazard pay. What is the real activism here that I'm not seeing anywhere else other than the few cities that has mandated? The, the hazard pay.
Could you be able to like, a little more specific?
So, so the activism you're saying that pushed you guys to ask for the hazard pay. Where is it? I'm not seeing it is what I'm saying.
Oh, well, my understanding is that. This discussion around hazard pay is born out of some lobbying and organizing that a handful of our members who work in Auburn have done. I understand they've written the council, they've called the council. They have gotten their coworkers to sign petitions asking for the council to bring this up. And then because there were, you know, folks on the council who are friendly to this proposed ordinance. That, that is how this issue ended up on the, the docket here, if I understand correctly. So that engagement, that participation was a, a result of initially passing the ordinance in Seattle. We ran a training and a webinar for how to participate in your local government. And as a result, we've had. Well over nine municipalities, I believe, pass hazard pay ordinance. And there have been countless other ones where people have gone and spoke at council and the council's taken, you know, made the decision to take no action on hazard pay. But that, I, you know, places where it has been brought up is, at least from my understanding, is a result of, you know, rank and file union members or grocery workers. Going and speaking at council about why this is an important issue. If I am mistaken about how this was brought to the docket, please correct me, but that's. But that's how I understood it from my end.
It was brought up after the fact. I mean, sorry. How do I want to say that? The ordinance was brought up, then after that is when we started and the petitions. Not before that. So that's all I have for right now. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome, Councilmember J Raj. So for the presenters, we've had questions asked in relation to the grocery industry, industry, perhaps looking at reducing hours of employees. Perhaps cutting back on on the number of workers or other types of arrangements like that. We've also heard from people in the community who have said, and we've actually had it in council discussion as well, that an ordinance like this would hurt those who are less fortunate in Auburn. So on those types of issues, I'm asking the three of you how you would address those concerns.
So I'm happy to start, and I want to first address the reduction in hours. When we were at the height of this, we had more hours than than we could hire. And I I actually want to give the union credit that they actually allowed us to go out and offer hours to laid off folks in other industries. Specifically, we worked with Washington Hospitality Industry to hire restaurant workers that had been laid off. Conveniently enough, they all had their food handler permit, so it was handy. And being able to bring them on, and and that was to the union's credit of getting us that flexibility. In part because we needed, they were getting hammered with hours and we needed to give them some space too. So for us, now we are starting to kind of see what the new staffing normal looks like. But even as we go through these phases, you know, you go from phase two to phase three, back to phase two. We have different staffing staffing ratios, not based on the phase, but on what we have to do accommodate for that, counting at the doors, those types of things. So staffing is going to change and the available shift numbers are going to change. I would never presume that we are going to impact whether stores stay open or not. That's not my call to make. So as far as the impact on communities, whether it is whether stores close and people stay working, whether hours get cut because of additional hours. One of the questions that would ask that was asked that I do think is an interesting one is for those of us who do hire people who are on disability or SSI or on public assistance. There's a really tight trip line where if they earn just a little too much, they potentially get completely kicked off the program. And so for those individuals who either for disability or mental health reasons have asked to work a very low number of hours or who have chosen to choose a reduced wage, which we actually cannot offer any under any circumstances anymore under state law. We now have to look at those and trying to make sure that folks can still stay employed, still earn a wage, still go to work and be mindful that we're not pushing them up against those SSD or SSI limitations. And part of that is because we're in an industry, we can flex like that and offer those kind of hours.
I would say that a lot of my answers is the same as Holly's. SARS is slightly different just because they do provide more specialty food and snap and wick to low income. And so you're, so when we talk about potential hours reduced or cost of food increase or store closures, at the end of the day, it is up to the store owner, who I am not. And so I can't answer that, but I can say that when we are talking about these type of things, we do have to look at the whole picture. And so there are unintended consequences in this, and that might be one of them where it's where like right now, the federal government just authorized an additional thirty five dollars for for fruits and veggies for the low income, which is great, and that's something that we are preparing and will be addressing. But then if we have this extra eight thousand dollars a week, that money that could have gone to buy more product, things like that, we now can't do. And so now there's less product and things like that for the consumers. And that also means a tent, and this is all potentially, right? This is things that the owner and the management get to decide what they do with their store. And so that's the kind of things where it's like, I can tell you what may happen, but it's up to the grocery store owner or the manager to decide.
And then I would just follow those comments by saying I I I think that the, you know, the impact of store closures or hours reductions, I think. Folks talked before me, right? Like some of that stuff is arbitrary, like there is only so much palm reading you can do about whether or not those things will happen at a store. I think, you know, if we look at some of the like the financial records, particularly at the larger companies, is not a question of whether or not that like hazard pay can be afforded or not by these companies. It's it's a question about how are these companies going to act in terms of accommodating into that budget like? Hazard pay will not caught like directly cause a reduction of hours or that even the need necessarily for there to be reduction hours based on the, you know, the financial reporting. Is it possible that there that is, you know, a result perhaps? But it is that strictly based on whether or not these companies can afford it, it will not have that, that will not be a direct impact.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember J Raj, you have a question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I promise this will be my last question. This is to the three of you because I've had quite a few residents approach me and say, it's not the government's business to mandate hazard pay. I want your opinions. I want to hear your opinions, all three of you.
I'll go first. I think, I mean, my opinion is pretty clear based on on where I work. But I think that other cities have acted and there have been lawsuits filed and we have seen that local municipalities do have the authority to act on this issue. And I think that local governments that are willing to have a moral obligation to act and, you know, in this moment for at its root, these companies that would be affected by this ordinance have, you know, the the data will show you they have made massive windfall profits, not just during a pandemic, but because of the pandemic. And I don't mean that in in a cruel sense, but there has been a tremendous shift in the way in which people consume food. People are buying more and more groceries than they've ever bought. And from the start of this pandemic to now, the workers who have made that those profits possible have gone to work every day, not knowing if they were going to bring home COVID to to a new baby, to an elder who lives in the house with them. And at its core, the decision to implement a hazard pay ordinance is taking a stand that the 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 city in question stands with the workers who make those profits possible. As a political organizer, the ins and outs of policies are are not the forefront of my job. I have the opportunity, the privilege in federal way of training one of our members how to speak at public comment. And he went to the city council in federal way and he spoke about how he has three kids and, you know, the fear that he is kind of lived with every day going to work and bringing this home and how frustrating it is to do that work for a company that is making billions of dollars off of the work of him and his coworkers. And to not feel respected for that work that he is doing. And ultimately, these ordinances are an opportunity for cities to show, show the folks that do this work, that they have their back. And, you know, at its root, that that's what matters to me and, you know, have the opportunity that a handful of workers here have had to kind of bring this issue to 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 the limelight. I hope the council will adopt it, but I, you know, understand why they might not.
Hello, my name is Monica Smith, and I'd just like to say something really quick on behalf of the grocery workers. I am the union representative for the South Auburn store, the Auburn Safeway, SARS and the Kroger Fred Meyer store. As a union representative for UFCW twenty one in Auburn, I know that hazard pay ordinance will promote equity in the city of Auburn. It's true for union and non-union grocery stores. We know that workers in service industries are predominantly women and members of the BIPOC community. And I've heard directly from my members who say they need this. Is and and one of the most ardent organizers organizers in Auburn for this ordinance. Her name is Kyung Berry, and she works at the South Auburn store. She is a woman of color. As I say, she works at Albertson's, it's now Safeway. She sits on our E board and she's on our bargaining team and she hears regularly from coworkers and other fellow union members that need hazard pay to address the increase of childcare, transportation, healthcare and other costs. I don't know how many of you guys have had to wear a face mask on your face all day long. I can tell you that when I go into my stores, I have to wear it for a couple of hours at a time. I cannot wait to get out to my car and rip that mask off my face just so that I can breathe some fresh air. I think that as long as our members have to wear these masks on their face, the the risks are still out there. We've had to shut down whole pharmacies, sanitize them and bring in a whole new crew because they've had a few pharmacy members, whether it be the pharmacist or the tech that have contracted COVID nineteen. I've had store directors that have contracted COVID nineteen. I've had members, I have a member at my Auburn, Fred Meyer, whole family contracted COVID nineteen. And subsequently, she lost her son to COVID nineteen. As long as this virus is still out there, I think that our members are deserving of this extra pay for recognition for putting their lives on the line for not only feeding their families, but feeding their community. Thank you for the time.
Deputy Mayor, can we continue with a question?
I just want to, I just want to thank Monica for for chiming in here because we can't see her on video, but thank you for that, Monica. Councilmember J Raj, go ahead, and I've got another question. Did you, would you repeat that, please?
So the question was, is government mandate, is it? Why? So why should? What do you think about the government? If if government should mandate or not is the question. That was the question that originally I posed for the three of them. So Holly is ready to speak on that.
If I want, if I might, I want to be respectful of Councilmember Trent Manuel. May I answer or do you want to?
Yes, please.
Councilmember J Raj, if we could hold that quickly because Councilmember Trump manual did have her hand up. And I would like to recognize her and then come back to your question. I have a similar question that you raised as well, Councilmember J Raj. So Councilor Trump manual, please ask your question first.
Okay, I have the same concerns as and questions that Deputy Mayor Decorsi asked. But I also have one that I want that has not been asked is why now? Why now are we asking for the city to pass an ordinance for hazardous pay? When the stores paid at the beginning of the virus of the COVID, they paid the two dollars and then they stopped. Why not continued that at that time? Then also, I understand that several of your members have gotten the COVID. And I know the lady and the whole and her whole family that caught the COVID and lost their their son. They're one of my best friends. And so I I it wasn't caught and it wasn't brought home from the grocery industry. It was brought in from another family member. But my heart goes out to everyone that has gotten it. And we also have not only the grocery industry that are in the front lines. We have our police department, we have our first, our paramedics, our nurses, our doctors. And now we're only asking for the grocery stores to do this. And as Councilmember J Raj has said, I always understood that as council members, we're policymakers. We weren't people, we weren't counseled to make industries to pay their employees more. So my question is, how can? Why should we? Why should we? To all three of you.
So so I will attempt to answer both of your questions because I think they both kind of align within the same context as well as the deputy mayor. And what I would say is that obviously we don't support the idea of of a government agency stepping into a wage and hour issue that is already part of an active contract negotiation that we have with our representative workforce in our grocery stores. And that's why we have a representative workforce in those negotiations. But I I will say without any government order whatsoever in in March, on the seventeenth of March, we paid, one company alone paid eleven million dollars in benefits. On the twenty fifth of March, they paid cash bonuses of another hundred million. Between March thirty first and May sixteenth, they paid two hundred million dollars in premium pay. On March thirtieth, they paid cash bonuses of another hundred and fifty million. In August, November and February of this year, they continue to provide an additional benefit per employee. That's one company. Safeway just in Auburn last year at one store in twenty twenty paid an additional wage rate of a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars at the A Street store and a hundred and eighty four thousand dollars at the Auburn Way store. And none of that was mandated by government. They just did it. So I would argue that it is not necessary to do, that we are still doing that because we are still grateful for our employees and the work that they're currently doing.
For my response, I think I have the kind of something similar. I don't have the numbers that Holly does. But we just do not believe that it is the place of the government to get involved in union negotiations. Because at the end of the day, that's what this is, is that there was a disagreement and now we're moving forward. And so unfortunately, we have, you know, not unfortunately, but at this point, we do have a minimum wage. And our stores still pay above minimum wage. We pay for benefits, we pay for pensions, we pay, there's a lot of things that we pay for in addition to providing an essential service. And so the answer is, I don't believe that the government should be involved in this when it is, you know, this is the reason why we have unions, just like Holly said. And with that, you know, why now? I think that is a very good question. Why now? Why now? When at the very beginning of COVID, we had no idea how COVID would impact people who are older, young people, people of certain races, different, different excuse me, ethnicities, things like that. While once we hit beginning of summer, that's when, because at this point, our guidance, even though it's gone a little bit up and down, has stayed the state, has stayed the same since then. And my personal opinion is when you have grocery workers who refuse to get vaccinated and yet they still want hazard pay for the work that they're doing, the question is, if you want to be safe, then you need to get vaccinated. And that is a whole nother thing that I think that we actually need to be focused on because there's a lot of issues that come with, you know, with vaccinations, especially with people of color. And that's something that, you know, we do need to address. And so and that's something that I think is important in order to keep your family safe, to keep your friends safe and things like that. So no, I don't think the government should mandate it when we have done the hazard pay. And then two, just the why now is a very good question.
Could I ask one more question, Deputy Mayor?
Could I ask one more question, Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Let me just clarify first, Councilmember Brown, did you have your hand up for a question? Or did you put it down? Okay. Councilor J. Raj, was your question answered? Okay, yes, Councilor Troutman, go ahead.
I used to work for local Union 21 when I was a journeyman meat wrapper back in the 90s. And I was also the shop stewardess. And my question is, is say hypothetically that this passes and they start laying off people, their benefits are cut as well, right? Because I know that a lot of the people that work for the grocery industry really depend on those benefits because some of their family members are, have pre-existing conditions and they really need it. So will they lose their benefits? That's for any of you.
If they are laid off, then yes, they lose their benefits after a certain period of time.
Okay, Council, any other questions or comments? Questions for presenters or any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, so those are you on the panel, Holly, Catherine, and Kirsten. Kirsten, thank you very much. We really appreciate your time and coming in to talk to us. And as you know, Council will have more deliberations on this before we get to the ordinance vote, which could take place next week. So thank you again.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. So Council, we will now move into another item. And then after that item, we're going to have us take a short break, although we have only been in the study session for an hour, we did have our executive session. So we will move into Resolution Number 5593 with City Attorney Como.
I am actually going to take lead on this Resolution 5593 on behalf of Director Como. I'm Jamie Thomas, the Finance Director, and I just wanted to introduce really quickly Phil Morgan. He is the CEO of Auburn Valley Humane Society. And he's here to talk tonight about their proposed fee schedules changes for, that would go into effect July 1st, 2021. Just by way of background, AVHS provides animal sheltering services for the city of Auburn. And a part of that agreement is that AVHS maintains their fee, their own fee schedule. And this resolution would just be an acknowledgement of the city council's review of that fee schedule and that the, the council has taken into consideration that that fee schedule is consistent with other sheltering costs in the area and that, that you approve essentially that fee schedule and don't have any major objections to the fee schedule as presented by the Humane Society. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Phil. He has a lot more information about the types of fees that AVHS has and why they're proposing changes. So please welcome Phil. You're on mute, Phil.
Thanks, Jamie, and it's nice to see you, Mayor Nancy. It's been a long time since I've seen you and Councilmember Trout and Deputy Mayor. It's really nice to see you guys. So 2013, we started doing animal control housing for you guys. And the prices there that you see on the top, I don't know if you have the document in front of you. I assume they do, Jamie.
The fee schedule for the councils' reference actually begins on page 73 of the council's packet.
Perfect. So the, the two on the top there, the 19, 20, 21 altered animal reclaim, reclaimed fee and the unaltered animal reclaim fee are the current prices that we set back in 2013. And we are looking to change them come July 1. We're actually lowering prices for reclaimed fees on licensed animals. We're trying to come up with some ideas for how we can generate more licensing revenue and make getting a license a more a better thing, I guess is the best way to put it. So the 2021, 2022 altered fee with license would go down $10. Altered fee without a license would go up $5. We're also looking at increasing our board fees from $16 a day to $20 a day. You can see the yellow, I don't know if you guys get it in yellow, but the yellow is the highlighted, is the, where the price increases. And then we looked at how do we effectively make the second, third, fourth, and subsequent impounds more in line with, I guess, what some of the other communities or what some of the other animal control agencies do. Page two of that document, hold on here, I gotta do a little shifting around. Page two of that document, go in there, kids. There you go. Has the altered, the unaltered fees, which would go to from 65 to 45 if you have a license, and then from, they're not changing, they're staying at 65 if you do have a license. Again, the board fees are going up a little bit. And then if your dog or cat comes to us more than one time in a two-year period, so on time two, there's a fee, there's time third impound, there's a fee to get it out. After the second impound in 2014, I believe it was, you guys passed some ordinance that said an animal has to be microchipped after the second impound and it must be spayed or neutered upon the third impound. And so we have our original mandated fees as of 1119. You can see them there on the left or in the center column. And then on the right, the only ones we're really changing are cat spay down to dog spay over 100 pounds, which is still significantly, significantly less than private practices. It's about the same price as our spot pricing. And then on the bottom of page two, you have City of Auburn Pet Licensing. And those license fees, we haven't done anything to or with, so they're, they're staying the same. I'd also like to introduce you guys to Jennifer Haskins. She is our, I say new, it's been a couple of months now since January, right?
Yes, January.
January. Our new Director of Public Services, who is in charge of everything front-facing at our shelter, which is adoptions and claim outs and pet licensing. She came from California, from a big municipal shelter down there where she has lots of experience doing all of the things that we do in a bigger volume that we do them. So I'm really excited to introduce her. She also came to me with an idea that I wanted to let her talk to you guys about today real quick and something that we're going to do some exploration on and then maybe come back to you third or fourth quarter of this year for a change for next year. Jennifer, you want to talk about that?
I'd love to. So something that is not, not uncommon in the industry that I would like to propose is potentially doing a, what we would call a free ticket home for animals that are coming into the shelter, being impounded as strays for the first time that they come into the shelter, if they do have a current license tag, waiving those impound fees for those animals. And this is only on a first-time impound. So it's essentially rewarding folks that are, you know, responsible, get their animal's license, maybe had, you know, a, an accident, a lapse in judgment, you know, that that animal may have escaped and come into the shelter, waiving those impound fees for their first impound if they are currently licensed within the city of Auburn. We're going to be looking over, so I'm going to be pulling data from the past few years about our licensing and impound revenue to kind of look at whether this is financially practical for us. But that was what I was wanting to propose.
The, the proposal would really benefit the city because I think it would drive licensing higher. It, it would impact us because we're not going to be collecting those fees. So that's the thing that we have to see is what is that, you know, is it 10 a month? Is it 600 a month, right? So if you're looking at $45 to $65 a pet, that's pretty significant. So that's one of the reasons why we want to take a real close eyeball on it and make sure that we're not doing something that's going to impact our revenue and how we do business. If there's any questions regarding the fee schedule, we're all ears for it.
Okay, questions, Council? Phil, Phil and Jennifer, one question. So when you talk about the, the waiving of the impound, impound fees, is this something that Jamie and Kendra, is this something that needs to come back to Council for a resolution? Or is this just through AVHS?
It would, that would be an operational decision for AVHS. I think it's really good information, though, for the council to hear and have, take into consideration for how AVHS operates. Of course, we have our mandated services through our contract with AVHS as well as, and the licensing services that they provide for us. So those would be the things that we would have direct control over, but everything else would be really management and operational on AVHS's side.
Very great.
Jamie, my understanding is, is that any fees or any fee changes that we do should be adopted by the council. That, that's the only reason I recommended bringing it before the council deputy mayor.
Yes, we should, the council should be reviewing the fee schedule and fee changes as, as they come along, as, as they're proposed by AVHS. That's correct.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we have a number of questions from council members, and I'm going to take them in orders. I saw hands raised, so first would be Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Phil, I noticed in the documentation that we were looking at here, there's a couple of words that are a little different than each other, and I was concerned about the, the competition. One part of the document says that they're competitive and another part of the document that says they're relatively competitive. Can you give us a little bit of a breakdown of comparative competition that has led you to the rates that you are presenting here?
Jennifer did a comprehensive, I should say comprehensive analysis of SIACA, which is Seattle City Animal Shelter, King County. Seattle Humane Society doesn't do animal control, so they weren't in the mix. I think Tacoma was in their mix, right, Jennifer?
Yes, so Tacoma actually has four different fee schedules for some of the different municipalities that they contract with. So all of those different fee schedules, Regional Animal Services of King County, City of Seattle, and Metro Animal Services were all included in, in the comparison.
And I think we are, we might be a couple dollars higher on some sides and a couple dollars less on other things. We didn't get any pricing on any of the mandated type of services that the city requires after the second impound and the third impound, you know, the spays and neuters and things like that. They just weren't available for a lot of the municipalities. But they're basically the same pricing that we have at our shelter and at our spay-neuter clinic in Tacoma.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Well, they kind of answered my question. I was going to ask a similar question. How are you doing, Phil? It's been a while.
Good, it has been.
Yeah. Anyway, my question was, we normally, council normally gets a comparison list of where, you know, whenever they bring something to us, and that's what I was wondering is who you compared with and, and if you could get us a copy of that. Okay, thank you.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's not, this is more of an adopting the fee schedule that we presented is my understanding, rather than an approval of it. Is that, Jamie, how does this?
It's an acknowledgement of the review of the, of the fee schedule.
Okay. So do you want me to send you the copy of the comparative analysis that Jennifer did?
If you have that available, I could forward that along to the council.
I do, Jennifer, could you send that to, to Jamie?
Thank you.
As you can see, I'm in, I'm in sunny Idaho where
You are, yes.
Trees are growing behind me.
All right, Councilmember J. Raj.
It was Kristen's turn before mine. I was the last one to put my hand up.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Stern, go ahead.
Oh, no, now I owe Councilmember J. Raj. Thank you, Jennifer, for mentioning that, you know, talk about lapses in judgment. And our, our dog constantly has lapses in judgment, maybe his owners too. But I definitely support the waiver. And I guess I was just looking for some clarification on that. Is that, I, I was unclear on the response to that. Is that something we're supposed to say, yes, we do approve waiver?
That was something that I just wanted to kind of bring up. I, I still want to do some, some research on AVHS data going back a couple of years on our impound revenue, how many of those first impounds of licensed animals that we actually do, so that I can figure out what type of financial impact it might have. So it's something that I was planning on revisiting probably in the third quarter so that we could adopt it for next year.
Oh, next year, okay. And then I think Phil had mentioned there wasn't data on like comparable costs from other cities where, was it spay and neuter? Was that?
Yeah, so it's the mandated, so some of them also have requirements that on the, say, whether it's the third or second, third or fourth impound, they require things like, like mandatory spay-neuter. And I wasn't able to get the fee schedules for all of those kind of additional mandated costs of subsequent impounds.
Why, why is that? Is that just unusual or is that super secret?
It was a, it was, I, I was having a lot of trouble getting kind of communication from folks at some of the shelters, essentially getting into contact with the right person. We, we have those fees available and pretty accessible to the public, but not all shelters have all of their fees listed to the public.
Oh, thanks.
And we're, we're an open book on our website. We, we tell you about everything, maybe a little too much sometimes. But the, a lot of the shelters, literally, even if I call the other CEO or the other director, I won't get, I won't get pricing out of them. It's there, but you know, Tacoma's like that, they're very proprietary to their information. And I guess rightfully so, you know, the municipality ones are a little easier, but you still have to, I still have to go through, what's that called? Public records requests? Really? You know, so it is what it is. We, we did the best we could with the, with the resources we had to get the information.
Councilor J. Raj.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Phil, my question is, is looking at the unaltered animal reclaim fees, which is the current. When I see the third impound, fourth impound, fifth impound, sixth impound. When I see the third impound, fourth impound, fifth impound, sixth impound, there's surgeries attached to it. So what kind of surgeries do you perform on all these? Say, for instance, one dog, the third impound gets the surgery. Does that same dog get another surgery? So what are we talking about? So I'm not understanding that here.
Sure. So originally, when we set this up, we had, the pet owner has the right to due process to ask city council or there's a process that they go through with animal control, the city's animal control, that allows them to figure out a way to get outside of not having that mandated surgery. There might be a medical condition, there might be a, you know, an age condition. And a veterinarian might say, yeah, no, we can't spay or neuter this pet on the third time. It's just not, it's not medically set. And then animal control gives us the approval to waive that. So we would waive that. So then the dog comes in the fourth time or the fifth time. Right? And so, you know, we had, I mean, we've, it has never happened. We put it into play, but it's never happened. You know, by the time the animal gets their third impound, after they got their second impound and they got their microchip and they got their third impound and they got, you know, the handful in nine years that have had the surgery, it's really, and then they just go from there right over to the altered animals fee schedule because they're now an altered animal.
Okay.
So that's, the thing that we're doing now is we're waiving, or we're not waiving that, we're restructuring that with a proposal, you know, for the July 1st pricing. Because like I said, those things have never happened.
So then the question becomes is, do we have to have the permission of the owner before the surgery happens? Or with the
They do have to sign a release, but they can't get their dog back till they sign the release. So we
Oh, okay.
Lost it.
Okay. Thank you, Phil. That was it.
Okay, Phil, it is good to see you, even though we have to look at each other on cameras here now.
I know.
And Jennifer, welcome and thank you for your input on this. And we thank you for your presentation and the discussion. And we'll move on now. So council, have a good evening. And council, for right now, we will go ahead and take a short break. We still have quite a few items on the agenda to cover. So it's 7:23 and we will reconvene at 7:30. So we are recessed until 7:30. All right, we will call the study session meeting back to order. And we will now proceed with ordinance number 6814 with Director Thomas.
Good evening again, council. I'm Jamie Thomas, Finance Director. And tonight I was just going to spend a little bit of time going over the high level tenants of ordinance number 6814, which is the BNO tax ordinance. We've had quite a few conversations over the last couple of months over different scenarios to consider as it relates to a gross receipts tax and a square footage tax, the relative impacts that it would have on different businesses in Auburn and across the different types of businesses as well in Auburn. So I, based on council, majority council direction, our last study session, I went forward and finalized an ordinance for our BNO tax, assuming a variable rate structure ranging from half of 1% for retail, 0.15% for the services sector and 0.1% for manufacturing and other and 0.15, 0.18% for the wholesale sector, as well as a 10 cent per square foot tax, per square foot, per quarter for warehousing businesses. And that's for warehousing space greater than 4,000 square feet in total. We've also built in a threshold, so this would only apply to businesses earning gross receipts of $500,000 in revenue a year or more. And then we also have some tax credits built in. There are the same tax credits that we've been discussing from the beginning, which includes a new business tax credit would give new businesses in the city $1,000 per employee, as long as they have a minimum of 20 employees that they bring into the city of Auburn. There's, so those are kind of, those are part of the original tax proposal that we've been talking about really since March or since February, excuse me. There is one new piece of the tax code that you haven't seen before. And that is what we call the administrative procedures. It doesn't have any necessarily council kind of impact as far as decisions to make, you know, is it a tax rate or anything? It's really just the administrative provisions. It's also a model ordinance. It talks about when taxes are due, penalties, as well as the appeal process for businesses. If they feel like they're, if they have paid the incorrect amount or whether or not they feel that they need a hearing examiner to review their taxable amount, whether or not it actually applies to their business or not. So that's just the administrative provisions. There isn't, that really kind of goes in conjunction. If we're going to have a BNO tax code, we have to have those administrative provisions and processes attached to it. But there isn't as much flexibility as far as language goes, what we can include and what we can't include that follows model ordinance very closely. There are a couple of things to the tax code in addition to the administrative provisions that have been added over time, really exemptions and deductions that have come up throughout the process. I think some of them we've discussed more than others. The first one is on page 117 of your council packet. And that is the hybrid, it's the hybrid and alternative fuel vehicle deduction. So this would apply to alternative fuel and hybrid vehicle sales. So a car dealer, for instance, that would qualify for the BNO tax would be able to deduct the revenue from their total gross receipts. The value of a new vehicle, $45,000 or a used vehicle, $30,000. This is really to encourage the sales of clean fuel burning vehicles. It really just models the state's sales tax exemption that currently exists on the same types of vehicles. So it's a very similar language to just keep it less complex, kind of following one exemption, making our deduction kind of near that existing exemption that already is in place. Another change, it's really an addition so far into our code is also on page 112 of your agenda packet and it relates to hospitals. So this also mirrors a lot of very similar language to what other cities have throughout the region, recognizing that there's nonprofit hospitals and nonprofit care providers that really do a service for the residents and the citizens within a city that are either uncompensated or undercompensated by either social security or disability. So taking this into account, the value and the benefits that some of these nonprofit hospitals and nonprofit healthcare centers have, allowing for an exemption of those hospitals if they have a gross profit of less than $30 million. So this isn't revenue, this is profit. If they have less than that, less profit than $30 million a year, they would be exempt. Furthermore, if they actually generate more than $30 million in profit, they wouldn't be exempt, but they would be able to deduct 30, the first $30 million in their, in their actual revenue for determining tax purposes. And this, again, the number coincides with the $30 million gross profit, but also takes into account what an estimated uncompensated care amount that those hospitals are operating. So really the loss that the hospitals are operating under to provide that necessary care to citizens of Auburn and those seeking care in our hospitals. So those are really the only two changes that have an impact to businesses. Since the very first, other than the actual code numbers, we actually have an actual code number. Originally, we had a placeholder of chapter one. Now we actually have, it's chapter 3.53 and 3.54 of the Auburn City Code. Other than that, all of the elements of the code are the same as they were in the original proposal and the amendments that we've been kind of tweaking. in the original proposal and the amendments that we've been kind of tweaking with as we move forward as it relates to tax rates and thresholds and that sort of thing. So with that, I don't, since there isn't really any new information to present, I didn't prepare a PowerPoint presentation tonight. But we do have the, the BNO tax, the actual ordinance on the, the council agenda for next Monday night, May seventeenth. So I wanted to make sure if I've answered all of the questions, if there's any amendments that you would like to see made before then or changes, anything I can answer, I would like to open it up to the council.
Oh, quick question, customer J Raj first. Jamie, you mentioned the nonprofit health organizations, and you mentioned the profit, the, the document says thirty million dollars in gross income and then exceeding the thirty million dollars in gross income. A little confused as to how we're addressing that.
Yeah, I apologize. That was not so much profit, so gross income. So that would be revenues, less cost of goods and
Sure.
expenditures, but
Okay, great.
before taxes.
All right, thank you. Customer J Raj.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jamie, a quick question on nonprofits generally. How are we going to deal with them, like say, for instance, our symphony?
So generally speaking, there isn't a blanket exemption for nonprofits. There are certain exemptions and deductions for different types of activities for nonprofits, and our symphony, most all of the activity that the symphony, all the revenue generated by our Auburn Symphony actually falls under the deduction or exemption sections of our code. There'd be very little, I can't even think of what kind of revenue that they would generate that, that aren't exempt. But using the symphony as a specific example, there are, their revenues for the most case would be deducted or exempt from the tax. Therefore, they probably wouldn't even be required to report if their total taxable revenue doesn't exceed five hundred thousand dollars. I can, that's not necessarily the case for all nonprofits, though, because all non, every nonprofit has a different mission and a different revenue source.
So basically, every nonprofit has a different calculation kind of.
Uh, well, every business will have a different calculation, but nonprofits, it would really, it really depends on what their mission is. What are their revenue sources and do they, are there certain revenues that would be exempt or exempt outright in our code, or do they have maybe some revenues that are exempt, but then they have other revenues that aren't? They might have some revenues that are deductible from their gross taxable or from their gross revenue. So it, like I said, it really is all case by case, based on the organization themselves.
Okay, so have we decided how we're going to do that? Like you said, case by case, do we know exactly? What, what is the plan is what I'm trying to get at.
All, well, we, all the deductions and exemptions are in the code currently. So that doesn't mean we can't add more down the road. It, it would be up to a nonprofit organization to, to go to the exemption or deduction section of our code to say, oh yeah, these, these are the types of revenues we have. We are not, we don't, we are, we don't, aren't required to report and pay a BNO tax based on the type of business we operate.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jamie.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jamie, uh, the deduction where the amounts derived from the sale or lease of clean alternative fuel and hybrid vehicles, the sunset, I mean, it looks like it's only in existence for four years. And it sunsets on December thirty first, twenty twenty five. I was just wondering why we picked that date when, you know, you read in the news that, you know, Honda's like planning to go all electric by twenty forty. You know, GM's twenty thirty five. So, you know, the, the amount of electric vehicle sales is starting gradually increased, but you know, not really significantly until after twenty thirty. So I'm just wondering why we're sunsetting this with what it looks like to me to be pretty early.
So this one, there's some mixed signals in the market as far as what, which manufacturers are churning or are planning to switch to full electric or even majority of their fleet to be electric and hybrid. And what I was hoping to do is if there's a push in the next couple of years to expedite the, the rollout of hybrid and electric fleet, I don't want to necessarily write a code that has us losing a large portion of our BNO revenue, because now suddenly a very large portion of the auto sales in Auburn are electric or hybrid. And so with that said, we can always extend the date of that exemption. If we're, you know, if we're just seeing a slower adoption rate, then we can always extend that, that exemption date out. I was really trying to create a little bit of a buffer for us in case there is a bigger push more quickly in the next couple of years. And let's just say hypothetically, all of the dealerships are now fifty percent electric by twenty twenty five, then we're going to have to account for that lost BNO revenue in higher rates. And so that's why I put the exemption until twenty twenty five. We can extend it out, knowing that we might have to increase rates in other areas to make up for those large deduction amounts, but that is the reason why I set that sunset date out sooner rather than later. I'm, I'm open to more discussion around that, though.
Oh, thanks. I was just sort of curious what the metrics were. So with that in mind, yeah, I mean, extending it sounds quite reasonable. The only thing I would just, you know, suggest is that we, you know, develop a system to measure and to get reporting on the actual number of sales. So when we, you know, comes time to make a decision, we have the data right in front of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Jamie, have we done all that we can to, shall we say, the square footage fees for warehouse floor space to help mitigate some of the fees that are being charged to some of the other businesses in the city? I really, you know, if we're looking at, at a, at a square footage of ten cents per square foot per quarter, and let's say the space doesn't change for the year, are we really looking at like forty cents a square foot per, per annum?
That would be, well, so there's kind of, there's a two, two tiered thing. If, if their grocery receipts tax is more than the square footage tax, it would refer, they would pay the square footage tax and not, not the forty cents in, I have to do the math, but let's say it was forty cents, they would pay the grocery receipts tax instead of the square footage tax. Yeah, um, so it's, but to answer the, kind of the first part of your question about have we looked at really making it equitable, I think is what you're asking equitable between, between the warehousing activities and all of the other activities. Yes, and I, you know, just looking, and that's why we really kind of set the, the ten cents, ten cents per square foot per quarter was really kind of, the, kind of that break even spot between warehousing industry as a whole paying the same relative amount of tax burden as all of the other industries. And then, of course, it's a wide range, because you've got some warehouses that might be four thousand square feet. You've got other ones that might be five hundred thousand square feet. So there's a pretty huge, huge spread between, but that same goes for retailers as well. There's a big spread on, on retailers and the the grocery receipts tax. But if you take those industries as a whole, and, and how many, how many businesses are actually going to be subject to those types of taxes within each sector? That, that ten cents per square foot seems to really get that industry in general paying their the same relative amount per revenue generated.
And does that actually kind of somewhat compare to some of the cities around us like Kent and others?
Correct. Kent's is nine cents per square foot for warehousing. They also have a separate square foot fee for all other businesses. So even if you're a retail business, as long as you're a retail business or even a services, as long as your office space is I, I'm not going to, don't quote me on the square footage, but if it's, let's say, over four hundred square feet, there is a, it's a small, smaller tax, not nine cents, it's much less than that, but they pay a square footage tax for all of those different types of businesses in the city as well. But from the warehousing standpoint, I would say that our proposed fee of ten cents per square foot is pretty competitive with Kent's nine cents per square foot. Bellevue's is much larger, but I don't know if Bellevue's necessarily comparable to Auburn and Kent in this case. And then, of course, our rates and all those other sectors is lower than Kent's as well.
Thank you.
Well, Jamie, a question, I've heard from some of our, our business community. We've done a lot of outreach to chamber members. We've had all of our meetings with the chamber members. I know you have had more sessions with them as well. What type of outreach have we done with the non-members of the chamber? Have you had any feedback from them? And is there any, you know, any comments they've made or any questions they've had? Or some may not, or a couple I've talked, we're not even aware of it, because maybe they don't read the Auburn Reporter, maybe they don't see the Auburn Examiner, maybe they don't watch us on video, whatever, but they had no idea. So I'm just curious as to how else we're reaching out to the business community.
Well, I mean, other than the chamber from, there's been a couple of businesses, I think mostly have gotten their information through the chamber, and they've contacted us directly to ask some very specific questions that we've tried to answer and work our way through those on a, on a one-on-one basis. And there hasn't been any outreach, partly because we don't have a code to say this is, this is what's coming your way. There's obviously, we're, we're starting to kind of get into crunch time between now and January, when the taxes have become effective, but in, this will be, would be a very critical seven month period of time where we're doing business outreach, answering questions. I think that that, having an actual code in place to be able to answer more specific questions is the most important piece. Right along the lines of Councilmember J Raj's question about nonprofits. Well, until we have a specific code, it's really hard to ask, answer very specific questions. And then there's the, we don't really know. We have to let the businesses tell us are they going to be, are they, are they going to be on the hook? Are they under the five hundred thousand dollar threshold, or are they over the five hundred thousand dollar threshold? So there will be a huge education effort that we are going to be needing to push out in the next seven months as we roll out the, the BNO tax program. But until we actually have some foundation for that, it's really hard to get really specific information for specific businesses.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions for Jamie, Council? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, we will now move into ordinance number six eight two zero with Director Gao.
Good evening. So for the record, Ingrid Gao, Public Works Director. And with me tonight, I have Tim Mencanides, our Airport Manager, in case you have any questions as we run through the code changes that we've got in front of you tonight for the airport. So many of you recall back in twenty nineteen, we actually changed our management structure at the airport and went from having a contract management system out there to actually having management by our in-house city staff, which is Tim and his team. And as part of that, we've been going through our code language related to the airport and doing an update of that language to fit with that new management structure. And so there are several changes that are in front of you tonight in the draft ordinance for sixty eight twenty. And I do want to point out to the council that after the packet was created last week, our legal staff decided that because of the, the topics within the ordinance itself, we actually need to do it as two ordinances. So on Monday night on the seventeenth, you're actually going to see two ordinances, sixty eight twenty and sixty eight twenty one. They have all the same language that you see in the draft ordinance in your packet tonight. And what we've done is we've broken it down by, by subject areas. So one, the new sixty eight twenty will actually cover management items within there. So basically, the definition for the airport supervisor versus the airport manager, some changes to the airport board structure and processes and those management type things. Sixty eight twenty one will cover the items that are more related to the operations of the airport. So that's going to be things like the ultralights, adding the derelict aircraft code in there, and then modifying several sections of twelve fifty six for the airport, which is all related to, again, operations out at the airport. So that's kind of a really broad overview of it. Specifically, in your packet on page one thirty six, there's a summary of what all the changes are that we are doing, a high level summary. So at the main part of it, back when the airport code was first codified, we had language in there for an airport supervisor. And that language change, we're proposing to repeal that section, because that's really a job description, and we don't really put our job descriptions within the code. We do that through our administrative processes. So we felt that that was really kind of an antiquated way of doing that, and we really needed to pull that out. As well as now that we have an airport manager in Tim, that those duties and processes change a little bit and match more up with what his actual job description is. In addition, we propose to repeal the ultralights section in chapter eight thirty six. This section was added several years ago to address, I believe, issues around ultralights as they were first coming out. And Tim and I looked at that code, and we said, you know, that really should just be handled through our, our airport rules and regulations for how ultralights are handled in and around the airport. And so we're proposing to move those to our airport rules and regulations document. That rules and regulations document is a document that we maintain that basically all the users and tenants of the airport need to comply with. We also have, again, many changes within twelve fifty six. Happy to walk through all the specifics there, but just in general, it's basically updating that language to remove references to the airport supervisor, to change some of the management items that are at the, that were included in the code that really, again, should be in the rules and regulations for how our tenants and users of the airport operate out there. And then there's a new section covering derelict aircraft. The intent of this new section is really to give Tim the authority that he needs to address derelict aircraft on the airport so that we can get those to be functioning aircraft, and that is really to keep us in line also with FAA regulations. And then we have, again, additional modified sections in there, which is the airport Advisory Board and some updates to the standards and requirements for the board that we've actually gone through and reviewed that specifically with the board. And so all of their comments and concerns have been addressed in the draft that you see before you tonight. Again, modifying the administration in twelve oh two, which was basically previously when the airport reported to the Planning Department at the time, this code section had a section referencing the airport director as being the authority over twelve fifty six. And so now that that airport is within the Public Works Department, this is providing that correction so that it's actually the Public Works Director that enforces twelve fifty six. And then, again, last changes in twelve fifty six, all around, again, that organization and operations changes at the airport. So with that, if you have specific questions or items that you'd like us to go through in more detail, we'd be happy to do that.
Any questions, Council? Now, seeing Ingrid, so great explanation. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tim. All right, next on our agenda is our twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven Transportation Improvement Program Updates, our TIP. And turn over to Director Gao, but I know we're going to have James giving us a report.
You are. So I'm actually going to hand it over to James Webb, who is our Senior Transportation Engineer, to go walk through our TIP update with you and our traffic impact fee update.
Great. Welcome, James.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Ingrid. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. James Webb, Senior Traffic Engineer. And I am here with you this evening to present our annual TIP update and Uh, and I am here with you this evening to present our annual tip update and the effect that that will have to our twenty twenty-two traffic impact fee, uh, schedule. Um, the tip is required to be updated every year by R C W, and that amendment is required to be accomplished by the end of June. Um, so here we are. Um, the tip is a short-term, six-year transportation plan uh, where we use it to identify upcoming, uh, capital project needs and, uh, revenue projections needed to support that list of projects. Um, there are, in the, the memo in your packets, um, there are several lists that I'm going to go through quickly. Um, so starting off with the projects to be removed, there are a total of eight projects to be removed. The majority of those projects are being removed because those will be completed during this year, so no longer need to remain on the tip um, for twenty twenty-two and beyond. There are two projects in this list that I will draw your attention to. The second one in the list, which is Project N three, which is the arterial bicycle and safety improvement program. Um, while that program, the N three itself is being removed from the tip, the funding and the scope of that program is being combined with one of our other non-motorized programs in the tip, um, which I will talk about, uh, in one of the subsequent sections. Um, the second project in that list is N eight, which is the twenty twenty-two Local Street Preservation Project. Um, the, that project is being removed from the tip as the funding that was allocated to that twenty twenty-two project specifically is being moved into the lead service line, uh, replacement project, CP nineteen twenty-two, to cover additional uh, local street preservation work that's being accomplished with that project. Um, moving on, the next section talks about new projects which are being added to the tip. Um, so the first three projects in that list are all projects that we have either recently been awarded grant funding for or are anticipating to receive grant funding for. So the first is R four, which is the A Street Loop Project, um, where the project finances have been updated to show that the um, construction grant has been secured that was awarded to the city through the PSRC back in April of this year. Um, the second is R six, which is the Auburn Way South Widening Project between Hemlock Street and Poplar Street. And again, the project finances for that project were updated to reflect the award of about a three-point-six million dollar federal grant, again, um, awarded through PSRC back in April of this year. Um, the third is a non-motorized project, N seven, which is the Auburn Way South, South Side Sidewalk Project. Um, again, while we haven't had confirmation of the award yet, we are on the list of projects that are anticipated to be awarded funding from the state um, for their sidewalk, non-motorized improvement program. Um, we're anticipating to hear about that, uh, we expect in June, which is why that is currently shown as being secured funding in the tip. Um, and then two, two remaining projects, I nine is a brand-new project in the tip, and that is a new I T S project to expand our I T S infrastructure up onto Lee Hill, um, which is about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar project. And then tip N five, uh, is a, another new project added to the tip, which is, um, a sidewalk and ADA inventory data collection task um, with a, a, a funding need of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, moving on, other modifications to the tip includes, um, for the I two program, which is the Annual Traffic Signal Improvement Program. Um, while we're not proposing any changes for twenty twenty-two, because that's currently budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars, we are showing, um, that rather than in the existing tip, that funding alternating year to year between a hundred thousand dollars and two hundred thousand dollars, that makes it really difficult to program things consistently and doesn't really reflect the needs of the, um, signal system throughout the city. Um, so we are proposing to, uh, balance that funding out more between years, starting with an amount of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three, and then gradually increasing that annual amount to two hundred thousand dollars by the end of the tip in twenty twenty-seven. Um, and what we've shown in recent years is that the annual need for that program has ranged between about a hundred and fifty and two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. So we're kind of right sizing that program to the need. Um, the second project on that list is N one, which is the Non-Motorized Safety Program. Um, as I mentioned earlier, this is a new name for the program. Um, it was previously the Pedestrian Accessibility and Safety Program. And we've combined what was Project N three, which was arterial bicycle and safety improvement program into a single project. Um, the benefits of that are, it adds a little bit, by combining those funds, it adds a little bit more money to a single program. And we feel that that gives us some additional flexibility on how we can, um, use those funds and the types of improvements we can program with that slightly increased dollar amount and that change to the name of the program. Um, next up is the Evergreen Heights Safe Routes to Schools Project. Um, what we've done with this project is revise the scope. The previous tip had a project by this name in it. Um, but it included, um, a roundabout and roadway realignment. What we've done is that we've moved that, or we, we will be moving that to the Comprehensive Transportation Plan as part of this year's annual update later this year. We've kept the, um, project in the tip, and we've refocused it on simply a safe routes to schools type project where the current scope would extend the existing sidewalk, um, to the west to connect between fifty-sixth and fifty-first avenues. Um, and expand the, uh, the pedestrian facilities that surround that school. Um, next up is P two, which is the Local Street Preservation Program. Um, for this, for twenty twenty-three and beyond, we have raised the annual expenditure of this program from one-point-six-five million dollars to two million dollars to reflect the program needs. Um, and you'll remember that we spoke to you about this a couple of weeks ago when we were presenting the annual SOS report. Um, the increase in expenditure is coming from spending down a little bit of the fund balance each year. Um, and then for this program, again, the funding for this is only secured or budgeted through the end of twenty twenty-two. The tip does show, uh, that funding will continue uh, for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven at the same level that has, it has been historically at one-point-five million dollars. However, the tip shows that that funding source has yet to be identified. Um, and then the last project on the tip, um, is the R one project, the Neighborhood Traffic Coming Program. The current tip has that, um, as a ten-thousand-dollar program through the end of twenty twenty-three, and then increasing that to fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four and beyond. Um, what we're proposing with this tip update is to increase the funding in that program uh, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, starting next year. Um, and that reflects the, uh, needs to expand that program and modify, um, the types of improvements that we're able to accomplish with that program to make it more effective and more widespread. Um, and we will be, uh, we're currently developing what, exactly what that program will look like, and we'll be presenting that to you later on in the year. Um, and, uh, doing a, um, budget amendment for twenty twenty-two to increase the funding in that program. Um, I think what I'll do now is I'll pause as I've covered a lot of information related to the tip in a very short amount of time. Um, and Claude, if, if you think now is a good time to pause for questions on the tip portion of this presentation before I move on to the impact fees?
I think we should, yeah. A quick question before Customer Rescind asks a question. So on the, uh, tip P two, our Local Street Preservation Program, we've known for some time now that the REIT two funding may not be sustainable for that. So I guess, James, the question, Ingrid, the question to Council would be is that what other types of, um, of resources would Council need to look at, if any, at this time to maintain our local street preservation program? Is it just a big question mark or kind of where do we go from here?
Um, I, I think that is a bit of a question mark right now. Um, I think there is some potential to continue funding that with REIT funds. But obviously, that funding stream is limited and, um, is competitive. So that, that, I think that is a decision that is with the Council to decide on the priorities for that funding. And if the REIT two funding isn't allocated to this, uh, Local Street Preservation Program, what the alternatives may be.
Great, thank you. And, and Council, this is one thing, uh, when we go through our tip, I would encourage each of you to basically go through the detailed sheets that are provided with this, um, and, and, and look very closely at each project that is being proposed and presented. Because as we get into the twenty twenty-three and beyond, um, the Local Street Preservation Program could have some obstacles financially in place, so it's important to start recognizing that now and, uh, not wait until we get up against twenty twenty-three to, uh, identify those things. So this is Council's responsibility again to look at this and uh, make some recommendations about how we can do what we need to do financially with staff input as well. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I had a question about Project R, R five. And that's the, uh, A Street, or R four, I'm sorry, R four, the A Street Loop. Um, so, um, it looks like it, it connects the, for the, that loop. I was like, what is that thing called? The loop to, um, to A, to, uh, I think it's A Street.
A Street type piece.
Right. And, and so that would go right through, um, what I, I think is a community garden that's, um, operated or used by the residents of the Wayland Arms. Um, you know, they, they really put a lot of work into that. So anyway, I'm just wondering what, what, what's going to happen to their garden?
That is correct. That is the alignment for that proposed project. Um, there is an agreement in place between the city and the Wayland Arms to allow those residents to use that space until such time that the city is ready to build the roadway connection through there.
Um, if I can add some clarification on that. So the city purchased the property where that community garden is. When we were doing the Third Street Grade Separation Project with the intent of making this roadway connection in the future between that Loop Road and A Street Southeast. And so at that time, we, we basically entered into agreement with the Wayland Arms King County Housing Authority to allow them to use that space for that community garden until the time that we actually build the roadway. So as we go forward with the design of this project, there will be some discussion and outreach with, uh, King County Housing Authority about what's coming and when that's coming.
Um, I, I guess what I'm going to ask then, is there any way to, you know, maybe help relocate some of that garden? So they, they can use it and also not get run over? Or use something, but you know.
Well, look, a little background up for me, because I was, uh, natural part of that, as we reported through that. Um, the garden used to be in the parking lot area. And as the loop was being constructed, again, the city came in very graciously, allowed that property to be moved across the street with that. So, um, those of us at that time, the King County Housing Authority, were well aware of what the impact may be in the future, um, with the community garden. And it would be kind of a little bit up to the Housing Authority to make another, um, potential, uh, garden area, perhaps. Um, you know, there's a space to the, uh, um, to the west that's, um, you know, that can be reconn, reconfigured to do that, but basically it would be the Housing Authority would have to look at how they would accommodate that. Um, quite a few of the folks at Wayland Arms are gardeners, and they use that religiously, so, um, something will have to be done once you get to that point. But as Ingrid said and James said, uh, the Housing Authority is well aware of that condition going forward. And this was quite a few years ago that we did that. So it's been quite a few years that, uh, they've had the opportunity to continue on with the gardening, and I might say it's larger than the space they had before.
It is. And, and I would say that we have full intention of having communication with King County Housing Authority early in the process, so they have plenty of warning to try to look at what could they do to address that community garden need.
If I was still there, I'd probably recommend them putting that on the roof, but I'm not there anymore. Uh, Customer, Trump, you have a question?
I lowered my hand, but then I thought about it. Uh, could you go over? I am really sorry if I have to make you do this. Go back and, uh, go over the items that were gonna be removed. Like, I'm not sure if there was two or three of them.
Um, I spoke to two. There are a total of eight projects on that list. Um, the first is the N three, the Arterial Bike and Safety Improvement Program. And that's, while it's being removed, it's being combined with the, one of the other programs. So the types of improvements that that program made and the funding for that program made are still in the tip. They're just combined with another program.
Okay.
Um, and then the second one is P eight, which is the, what we had identified as the twenty twenty-two Local Street Preservation Project. Um, and what we're doing is, um, basically using the funding from that project um, to still do local street preservation improvements. Um, but we're completing, um, the scope of work for that with the lead service line replacement project, which is a water utility project.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't get that when I went down to the lower and I noticed that it was the new pro, uh, other modifications. So thank you for clarifying that.
Welcome.
Okay, James, I think we're good to continue.
Okay, thank you. Um, so let's switch gears a little bit and talk about traffic impact fees. So the current fees that are in place were adopted on January one, twenty twenty-one, and were based on the funding needs identified in what is the current tip, which is twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six. Um, when we update the tip and we update the need for traffic impact fee revenue, we then take the next step and look at the traffic impact fees that result from that revenue need. So the current tip, or the proposed tip, I'll try and keep these straight. Um, the proposed tip, um, and I'm gonna try and share my screen. Uh, let's go there. So this is the, um, summary table on page one hundred and sixty-two in your packets. Um, this shows by year, the, um, traffic impact fee fund balance. It shows our anticipated revenue projections and it shows our project expenses year by year and then the fund balance. So it's the, kind of the second set of rows in the table. So for the, the six years covered by the proposed tip, the, the funding need for traffic impact fees is twenty-two and a half million dollars. Um, that is about a fifteen percent increase over what we show in the current tip, so twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-six, which was about nineteen and a half million dollars. As you can see in this table, the beginning fund balance The beginning fund balance at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-two, which is this number here. Is s- just over six million dollars. So we already have. Just over six million dollars of that two thousand and twenty, twenty-two and a half million dollar need in the bank. Um, so that means we need about sixteen point four million dollars still. Um, over that six-year period to fully fund the projects in the tip that have traffic impact fee money in them. Um, another change, if you look at the, um, end of your fund balances. You'll see that by the end of the six years that are covered by this tip, although it is a small number, the fund balance remains positive. Um, this is because we're trying to do a better job of financially constraining the tip. Um, the previous tip had a negative fund balance at the end of two thousand and twenty-six of about four million dollars. So that partly explains the increase in the funding need as well, because we're trying to keep the ballot, keep the fund whole. Um. The, so that, that talks about the revenue needs. We then look at the number of trips each year that that funding need is spread over. And looking at, um, so originally that number comes out of the comprehensive transportation plan. So right now we're still relying on the two thousand and fifteen plan for those numbers. But then we also look at the estimated number of trips that are generated by new development each year over the past several years. So looking at that number. Um, we're projecting that this funding need each year is spread over four hundred and thirty-six trips. Um, now that represents a very small, uh, decrease from the current tip. I think it was four hundred and thirty-nine trips. So very little change in the number of trips. We anticipate growth to continue at the same rate that it has during the, the last several years. So. We have the funding need and we have the number of trips that we need to share that out through. Um, the current fee per trip is four and four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. And that's based on the two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-six tip. Based on the numbers in the proposed tip. Um, we would need a seven percent increase to generate the revenue to fully fund the tip. And what that means is that the fee per trip would increase to five thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Starting in twenty twenty-two, which again is that seven percent increase over the current fee, which is four thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um. And that would apply citywide with the exception of Lakeland Hills. And then we make some adjustments for developments in, in located in downtown and I'll talk about those next. Um, so. We have the downtown urban center zone, the duck. And for development projects within the duck. To reflect the availability of transit service. To reflect the completeness of the non-motorized street system. And to reflect the density and the mix of retail and residential and employment opportunities. We reduce those fees for developments in downtown. This is something we've been doing for, for a number of years and this isn't, uh. We're not proposing to make any changes to that as part of this update. So, um, you know, we have a nineteen percent reduction for residential and medical uses. Um, a twenty-six percent reduction for anything that we consider to be recreation institutional retail or service. And a thirty-two percent for office uses. Um, and again, we're not proposing to make changes to those. The other area of town where we make changes to the standard fee is Lakeland Hills. There is a resolution that was adopted by council. It's resolution two nine five five. That, um, identified impact fees for, um, the land uses that are permitted in Lakeland Hills in the P U D. Um, part of that original resolution was to tie those to the consumer price index. Um, so that's what we've been doing. Um. The CPI data for this year isn't available yet. So we will be looking to update the fees for the Lakeland Hills P U D later in the year. And those will be presented as part of the overall citywide fee schedule updates, um, towards the end of the year. The last section of the memo. Provides a comparison of the proposed Auburn fee for a single-family residential unit. With those in a number of, uh, local agencies that are close by. Um, typically when we bring this to you, we have a nice little bar chart with. All of the jurisdictions in Washington, Western Washington shown to, to see how everybody compares across the board. Um, that's not available at this point in the year. A lot of agencies haven't started to work on updating their fees for two thousand and twenty-two yet. So that's not a, available for us to, um, present to you. However, um, the, the list in the memo summarizes a mix of current and proposed rates that are available. Um, what you'll see is that we're kind of mid-pack. The traffic impact fee rate for Auburn for a single-family residence would be about six thousand and fifty dollars. And for comparison to where we are in two thousand and twenty-one. The current citywide fee for a single-family residence is about five thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. So this represents about a four hundred dollar increase per single-family residential unit. Um. And. The, the reason that the per land use rate is a little bit different from the fee per trip rate is because we make adjustments. To account for the number of trips that are generated by a single-family house, which isn't one. Um, at the length of typical trip for each individual land use. And then we also make some adjustments for truck trips associated with commercial developments. So. That was all I had to talk about on traffic impact fees. So again, if anybody has any questions.
Jane, just a quick clarification for me. So you, you talked about the proposed citywide transportation impact fees. And the per-trip fee of fifty-two thirty-seven. And then our traffic impact fee at six thousand forty-eight and change.
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference between the two?
So the, the fee per trip is just a, a base number that we use as a starting point.
Okay.
And then we, to, to come up with the. Traffic impact fees for individual land uses. So a single-family residence, a thousand square foot of warehouse use, an elementary school. They all generate trips at different rates. And draw trips from different distances. Um, and commercial uses obviously typically generate truck trips, which are more impactful. So to account for that trip generation rate per land use and the trip, trip length. And truck trips, we make adjustments to come up with the actual fee for each land use. So there's the base fee. And then there's the fee schedule, which is based on the base fee, but is specific to each individual land use.
Okay, great. Thank you. That, that helps very much. So, council, any questions for James? I can't see the screen as we're still sharing screen here, but I don't see any questions or any heels raised.
I sit hand.
You do, okay.
Member has a question.
Who does? I'm sorry.
Councilmember Sterns.
Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Council, Deputy Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor, too. Um, I, I had a question about the downtown zone map. Um, I, I was just wondering how, how, how that was, um, determined, what's. Downtown. I mean, i- is it based on density? Cause. I mean, it looks like there's a lot of houses and I know there's a lot of commercial, um, businesses, um, on the east. Eastern side of Main Street. I'm just sort of wondering how that's determined and when does that get revised?
Um, so that was something that was developed, uh, by the community development department. And I believe it's based on the zoning, the land use zoning. Um, that determines that boundary and, um, how. The city wants the area in that boundary to look and feel as a downtown compared with the surrounding land uses.
Okay. Cause I mean, I'm looking at the map and I mean, it just, the, the houses inside the eastern boundary. I mean, they look like pretty much the same as the houses outside the boundary.
And, and I think Jeff Tate.
Yeah, yeah. Director, Director Tate has his hand up. So I think he can clarify this for us. That's where it starts.
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is the best answer, uh, for how it was defined, uh. But I think it's important to, to call out that it was defined about twenty years ago when the city went through a downtown urban center plan. Uh, sub-area planning exercise. So it was done back in two thousand, two thousand and one-ish. And, um, so I think the, the thought was there could be a lot of opportunity within some of those residential areas too, to have some home businesses that might run out of those, uh, areas. Um, and, uh, so it's probably a little bit of a history project to go back and look at the exact boundaries, but maybe more importantly. Is that, uh, we are just about to embark upon, uh, the update to that twenty-year plan. Uh, we actually have to submit a new downtown urban center plan to Puget Sound Regional Council and to the Department of Commerce by two thousand and twenty-four. So there's going to be a really fun, I think, and cool opportunity for the community. For council, for all of us to be involved in what the next, with the future of that looks like. Cause it is. The, the boundaries were drawn in a, in a, in a time when, uh, downtown just looked a lot different too. So much has changed.
Oh, great. Thanks, Jeff.
Any other questions, council? All right, James, once again, thank you very much for your tremendous work that you do. And, uh, keeping us informed. Ingrid, thank you. And we will now move on to our last. Item for council discussion on the agenda. And that's our South King County Housing and Homeless Partners skip update. And the two thousand and twenty-two work plan with Director Tate. And I know Angela's been waiting very patiently for her presentation. So take it away.
Yeah, uh, thank you. And this is easy for me because I'm going to turn it right over to Angela, uh, so that she can get started on her presentation. So. Angela, it's all yours.
Thanks so much, Jeff. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and council members. Um, is it possible to share my screen? My Apple? Yes, it looks like I can. Bear with me one second. Okay, I am going to go ahead and kick us off here. Angela Sanfilippo, I'm the executive manager for South King Housing and Homelessness Partners. And I did want to, um, provide tonight an opportunity for feedback on our annual work plan. So this is our work plan for two thousand and twenty-two. As well as give a brief update on work that we're doing to date and the work that we've been doing to implement the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one skip work plan. So I will be kind of talking through a review of our existing work plan as well as the process to develop our two thousand and twenty-two work plan. And, um, I will just say that this is a really important part of our process as we are developing that plan to reach out to. All of our partner councils and get feedback, answer any questions that you have. So we are in the development stages. And so as I go through this presentation, just, um, try to think about any questions that you might have for me on the work that Skip does or any of the items that I go over. But also, um, feedback and suggestions into our work plan for the upcoming year. So the first item that I wanted to review with you all is a draft skip mission. So this is draft because it has not been actually adopted by our executive board at this point. And, but skip is a collaboration of South King County jurisdictions, working together. And sharing resources to create a coordinated and comprehensive approach to increasing housing stability. And producing and preserving quality affordable housing in South King County. So this mission statement is intended to be very concise, but also, um, convey our overall purpose and values, um, for our collaboration. In terms of implementing, um, that skip mission, we have three identified objectives. The first being to share technical information and resources across our partner jurisdictions. To promote sound housing policies, programs and strategies. The second one being to coordinate public resources to attract greater pub, private, as well as public investment into affordable housing in South King County. And then the third one is to provide a unified voice for South King County in terms of advocating for our needs and priorities around affordable housing and attainable housing in the South King County subregion. So when we think about these objectives, we're trying to identify the, um, measurable, um. Performance measures that we can show this value added for the subregion of South King County. Um, our mission and objectives really, um, help us to guide our work planning effort and also, um, these progress. Um, and measurable, um, achievements as we move forward and implementing our work plans. The next thing I want to just go through is a review of our two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one work plan. And, um, as part of this review, we've got some recurring annual work plan items that will come back again and again. They're part of what keep us. Um, moving forward and they, they will be, um, on a regular basis, part of that annual work plan. So these are split up into three sub-areas. We have our governance and administration. This includes the process that we're going through now to update our annual work plan and budget. Um, as well as providing quarterly progress and budget reports. A new item on here is an annual update to stakeholder groups as well as our non-skip partner cities. So a mechanism for us to share the work that we're doing, um, outside of our partnership, but with our stakeholders as well as some of the, um, South King County, um, non-skip partner cities. Um, second item here is around policy and planning. There's a number of things that fall under this category. But in terms of, um, reoccurring annual work plan items, you'll see building funding support. And so that is building some funding support around our skip housing capital fund. And that I'll get into in a little bit more detail later and goes back to that increasing investment into South King County's affordable housing stock. The last item, um, last sub-area here is around outreach and education. So this includes representing Skip at local and regional meetings and forums, providing that voice for South King County when it comes to. Um, our local groups and organizations. And these include things like the, um, Affordable Housing Committee's staff team, the, um, Housing Inner Jurisdictional Team. Um, as well as a public funders group, um, that Skip has just recently joined. So includes all different areas, um, around affordable housing, um, across the region. We also monthly execute educational items for our skip executive board. And these tie directly into the work and the decisions the executive board is making and, um, stay on track with emerging issues that are happening across the county. We also partner with, um, other organizations and entities to provide education and engagement opportunities outside of our executive board. But more broadly for elected officials, stakeholders and community members throughout the region. And then annually, we adopt state and federal legislative priorities. Um, again, that unified voice and thinking about the advocacy for the needs in South King County. Lastly, you'll see, um, we, this year started convening the South King County Joint Planners and Developers Work Group. And this work previously had been convened by the Housing Development Consortium. And, and Skip took over convening of that group and providing space for collaboration and coordination amongst affordable housing developers. As well as local jurisdiction, um, land use planning, as well as her human service planning staff. In addition to those ongoing, um, and reoccurring work plan items, we've got some areas of focus, um, for two thousand and twenty-one that we are. Deep into developing at this point. The first one is. The first one is establishing the Skip um Community Advisory Board. So this will be an advisory board made up of twelve to fifteen community members that will provide recommendations to our Skip Executive Board um on policies, strategies, any funding or resource allocation decisions, and really ground the Executive Board decisions, as well as the recommendations to our partner scout councils in um community interests and needs um and priorities across the South King County subregion. The second item here is establishing our Skip Housing Capital Fund and developing an administrative plan and structure. So we have um gone over the fairly um big hurdle of pooling the sales tax credit revenues um to create a public um investment into that housing capital fund. And now we're working on setting priorities and adminis- and an administrative plan for that housing capital fund. In order to supplement and build funding support for our housing capital fund, we are looking into establishing a branch of Skip um that would have a five oh one C three status, um making um that um fundraising branch eligible for broader and more flexible funds through private and corporate investors. In addition to that, um as we look into that five oh one C three structure, we'll be developing marketing materials and advocacy materials to go out to private and corporate philanthropic type investors um to talk to them about our housing capital fund and the needs and priorities in South King County. We also are um working through the South King County um Joint Planners and Developers Group by creating a subgroup that is specifically working on identifying barriers to increasing affordable housing construction and preservation, and thinking about how that group can leverage the knowledge and experience at that table um to really work towards addressing those barriers. Last item on this list for an ongoing area focus is really inventorying the existing preservation programs for affordable and rental um aff- affordable rental and ownership housing across our partners. So this is really taking an inventory of what policies and programs are in place across South King County um and creating a tool for um our partners to kind of look to each other on things that have been implemented, um what has been seen success um and and how our um other partners are doing things when it comes to um preservation um in assessment of affordable rental and homeownership housing. In addition to those areas of ongoing focus, we do have um a couple of items that um I've identified as areas in need of attention. So these are um areas that need to be further scoped, um tapping into some of our partnership organizations' expertise, um or or also other areas um that will be um worked on later in the year in two thousand twenty-one. And and you can expect that these will also be ongoing and and probably implemented into two thousand twenty-two. So the first item is inventorying our naturally occurring affordable housing. So these are um affordable housing units that are not regulated across South King County and thinking about how we can create an inventory to actually track um what that naturally for naturally occurring affordable housing looks like, how much there is, um and give us a little bit of an idea of um where we are and also where there might be opportunities for acquisition or investment as we get our housing capital funds stood up. We also on here is developing examples of potential design standards and desired requirements. This falls into um some of the Housing Action Plan um work that our partner jurisdictions are working on and will really tie directly into some of the implementation around that and thinking about um what potential policies or programs um might be able to be implemented at the regional level or where there can be coordination um amongst jurisdictions on some of these items. And then we're also working really directly with some of our partners, thinking about um education and awareness around homelessness and affordable housing, and thinking about um back to that educational component of providing opportunities for the broader um stakeholder groups, as well as elected officials across the subregion, um to really um dive a little bit deeper into these issues and create a little bit more educational opportunities um specifically around affordable housing and homelessness. So this is our overview of our work plan and budget process. You'll see we're in this second item here, outreach and update to our partner councils. Um, and then our May twenty-first Executive Board meeting will be digging um deep into the work plan and budget development, incorporating um all the suggestions, feedback, questions that we hear from our partner councils um into a draft plan um that will come back to our partners councils for adoption um later this summer or early fall. In terms of priority setting, we have had initial conversations with the Skip Staff Work Group and identified a couple of priorities for the budget, as well as some priorities for the two thousand twenty-two work plan. The two priorities for our two thousand twenty-two budget um are to work on um a balanced budget that includes two full-time positions. So currently, um the Executive Manager position is full-time and we have a three-quarter time program coordinator. And in order to implement our work plan and and be able to be successful in our work, um we think it's necessary to have those um two full-time positions. And we'll be looking at budget scenarios um that provide a graduated approach to working towards that balanced budget um that can incorporate those two full-time positions. We also, as part of the Advisory Board structure that was adopted by our Skip Executive Board, we have committed to looking into and developing a compensation structure for what it would look like to provide compensation for our Skip Advisory Board members. Currently, we do not have this in our budget, um but we have committed, like I said, this Skip Executive Board has committed to looking into what that might look like in order to um implement equity principles and recognizing that our community members don't all have the same access to and ability to um volunteer their time on a community advisory board. So making sure that we are looking into that and how we can incorporate that into our future budget. In terms of our work plan, um continuing some of the ongoing action items that I talked about, um you'll can expect to see those reoccurring work plan items, as well as several of those areas of focus or areas in need of attention um being continued to implement in the two thousand twenty-two work plan. We also um see this coming up again and again, but this um priority around um developing strategies to preserve the existing affordable housing in South King County. So developing um additional strategies to how we can look at preservation programs and strategies across the region. We also wanna make sure that we are providing educational opportunities that directly tie to Skip's mission around providing affordable housing and preservation of affordable housing and how that ties directly into homelessness services, outreach, and best practices. So we know that affordable housing and access to housing is one of the main drivers of homelessness. But we wanna make sure that we are providing educational opportunities to create better understanding about the correlation between these two things. Also want to um continue um implementing the Educational Board opportunities and ensure that those are strategically tied to our Skip work plan. And then lastly, a priority area has been identified around strategic planning. So we have an annual work plan and budget process that's identified in our inter-local agreement. But we're also um prioritizing looking out a little bit further and identifying three-to-five-year goals and objectives that we can use in terms of our annual work plan process to work towards those longer-term goals. With that, I am going to go ahead and open it up to questions. I did provide my contact information here. So if you think of things later, please feel, don't hesitate to reach out to me um with your comments, suggestions, or questions that you have. Um, but happy to take any comments or feedback that you might have on our um work plan um or the work that we're doing and implementing currently.
Comments or questions for Angela, Council? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, thank you, Angela. Hey, um, I I I I know I wasn't the only person. I'm I'm sure there were plenty of others in the council today who were um attending the uh forum that that you were on, um Permanent Supportive Housing. And it was just absolutely amazing. It was really cool and I'd love to learn more about that. But it it just seemed like that really fits into what Skip is doing. Maybe you could just talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, thanks for bringing that up. It feels like, I can't believe that that was only um today at noon. Um, but yes, um, that is kind of what the kickoff to um of Housing Development Consortium's Affordable Housing Week and a kickoff to something that we're working with our partners um on developing more educational opportunities and um kind of a series of events. So that was sort of a Permanent Supportive Housing Overview one oh one um that we are intending to follow up with more of a series around um, you know, drivers of homelessness, um different types of housing within the continuum of housing, not just permanent supportive housing, but emergency shelters and and other types of housing that help to address those um those issues. So that is kind of one of the key things that we've been working on our partners with, is really providing more of those opportunities. Um, I don't know who all was on um from council, but we had about three hundred people on that call today. And I think that it really speaks to um, you know, the interest, um also some of the um you know, challenges around citing permanent supportive housing and some of the challenges that we've seen in our neighbor communities um around citing permanent supportive housing and community member feedback into the process. So just really timely um opportunity to have that event um and then also um be able to build upon that with um the additional series as we move forward. So many of those partners that you saw on that call are part of that effort to create a series of educational opportunities that will build upon that.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Angela, for being here tonight and the work that you do. Uh, my question is about the Advisory Board, uh the kind of structure and targeted individuals. Uh, what what are we looking at here in terms of your dream advisory board?
Very, very good question. We spent, we spent quite a bit of time on that and getting a lot of community feedback into our process as we developed that structure. And so the intention with the Advisory Board is to be representative of the subregion in terms of um the diverse um populations that are in in existence in South King County. Um, and then also to bring in knowledge and experience um into the Advisory Board around very specific areas. So bring in knowledge and experience around affordable housing development and finance, as well as tenant rights and education, um bringing in experience um with housing instability and homelessness. Um, and all of these things we have identified as being tapping into organizations and community members that are already doing this work. Um, I touched on that compensation structure. Um, and we've identified really wanting to make sure that we are not um doing unintentional harm to individuals that might um, we really might value their um knowledge and experience. Um, but we don't have resources and capacity at this time to provide compensation or provide um a lot of um resources. Um, we do what we can, but so kind of tapping into those organizations and community members um that are already um really engaged in this work and have a lot of ties to the community members throughout South King County. And so it's a good question and I'd be happy to um share that structure that goes into a lot more detail um into what exactly that Advisory Board structure will look like.
Thank you, Angela. Appreciate that.
Councilmember J. Rogers.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, Angela, thank you very much for being here this evening. Uh, very informative information uh, information that you provided. Um, as we all know that uh the moratorium on um housing is going to uh rental moratorium is probably going to end sometime by end of this year. Do we have any plans for for people who are going to be uh homeless possibly? Uh, to have housing for those folks? Plus, you know, we have an urgent need right now itself for homeless folks. So can you talk about that a little bit more, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I think that is forefront on um a lot of people's minds. And I think that's reflected in some of the historic investments that we saw in the legislative session around um rapid acquisition of properties, um providing new funding sources for um permanent supportive housing and also rental assistance with the increase in the document recording fees. So um, I don't have a ton of detail to be able, I wish I could say, yes, we are gonna have housing and we're gonna have um, you know, meet that urgent need. And I will say that um we do have a lot more um funding sources at the state level, um federal sources with um the American Recovery Act. I can't, I can, I get my acronyms mixed up. Um, but there's certainly um a lot more funding coming into local communities through King County's Rental Assistance Program, um through some of our local government partners um to help to address that need. It's not a perfect answer, um and I think it's something we all really need to be aware of and be focused on is when that moratorium ends and also what that looks like, how we can um advocate for and work towards a step down to that. I think we all know that, you know, just ending the moratorium without some plans and funds in place um is going to um increase a lot of these issues. So so thinking about how exactly that's done is going to have to be very strategic um and take advantage of a lot of the different funding sources that I've talked about and make sure that those things are in in place for our communities. So it's not a perfect answer to your question. I wish, I wish I had a a perfect answer to that. Um, yeah.
Um, I will go ahead and email you some que- some other questions because this is very important to me. Uh, and I think it's also important to most of our council members as well.
Yeah, please, I would appreciate that.
I will do that in the next couple of days. Thank you.
Councilmember Drop and Angel.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor De Corsi. And Angela, you must be tired cuz I was on that uh meeting this afternoon too and and very informative. I learned so much uh from all of your panelists. And uh, you guys have got your work cut out uh to fill these, these um vacancies for um one of the ladies mentioned that they they need a hundred, what is it, a thousand three hundred ninety? Homes to place people is, or is that people to be home-homed? Um, I just wrote that down. I think it was Cali. Um, Cali mentioned something like that. So um, it's it's very important that we do start doing this because as like Councilmember J. Rogers said, when the moratorium comes down, it's we're gonna see um some increase in maybe homelessness. And it's very, very important for our city to be on top of this as well. Um, but thank you for everything that you're doing. And then on the Advisory Board, you said twelve to fifteen people. Are you picking these people from um the west side, the the, or is it just South King County area?
We are specifically looking for people with ties to South King County. So whether they live in South King County, they work in South King County, they have really direct ties um and roots within the communities um represented across our subregion. So, yeah, very specifically, that is one of our criteria, is that they have those direct ties to South King County.
Okay, thank you. And I again applaud you for everything that uh is being done. Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
Um, thank you. Um, Angela, um you you mentioned the American Rescue Plan. And um, you know, I I mean, that that's something that um people talked about today at the meeting, but also the the twelve twenty, some of the state bills, as well as the American Rescue Plan. There's like the Recovery Act and the Rescue Plan, ARA and ARPA. Um, but yeah, it's kind of daunting, but I mean, it sounds like they're, they're definitely. But yeah, it's kind of daunting, but I mean, it sounds like there, there definitely is assistance and resources available for cities like Auburn. So maybe, you know, I guess what I'm wondering is, how do we educate ourselves or how can we work with you or the appropriate people to kind of get a real good running list of what those resources are and that are available to our city?
Yeah, I can definitely work with you on all on that. I am working to understand all the resources that might be available within that as well. But happy to share that out and work with, you know, through Mayor Bacchus or as the skip chair to bring forth that information to you all as well. I will say I'm also working with the South King County Joint Planners and Developers Group around thinking about that rapid acquisition funding at the state level and just trying to work with our affordable housing developer partners to better understand, you know, who's looking into that and where those resources are going to go. So there's kind of the state level funding, there's the federal level funding, and then of course, there's that county regional funding through the health, through housing and their acquisition program as well. So happy to kind of share with you as I make sense of all of these different sources of funding and opportunities, like you said, for communities like Auburn.
Mayor Bacchus.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So the, the guidance for the ARPA funding came out today as well as the opportunity for cities to apply for their portion of the funding. We are going to be one of the direct access cities. And council, as, as I've mentioned to some of you, we are putting together a team that will look into the different opportunities for funding. And then that will be brought to council for approval because it is budgetary, but we'll be looking at working with our directors with two council members and members of the community as well to identify the different options for the funding. There are four basic opportunities for utilizing that funding. But again, more guidance came out today. It was 100 and 100 and like 52 pages to try and get through just the funding, but that also provides information or not that document, but it also provides information on how there will be funding available for rental assistance that will go directly to the landlords as opposed to going to the tenants to pay for back rents. It will go directly to the landlords to ensure that that payment goes towards back rent. But there's a great deal of information for us to sift through, but, but you will be hearing more about that from us very soon.
All right, Angela, thank you very much. And as others said, you know, for the work that you're doing with skip. And council, you know, we, we, we hear the stories constantly of the need for housing. We all know what the need is, how great it is. And you know, last Friday, someone was participated in the forum that was held that Angela participated in as well as the executive manager of skip. And you know, just a reminder, you know, region wise over the last few years, we have lost 112,000 units of affordable housing. So in addition to the projections that have been made through the Affordable Housing Committee and the need we look at for preservation of existing affordable housing, there's a tremendous loss that needs to be somehow made up as well, which is a, you know, talking about climbing the Olympic wall. You know, this one, we need to take all five rings and all, all seven of us together with the mayor and all the staff and lift those rings up because it's a, it's a daunting task overall. I must say real quickly, you know, skip is not something that just happened. We spent, I don't know, a few years ago, we started looking at this as a concept. Housing Development Consortium was the facilitator for this. We had meetings in Renton, we had meetings in Auburn, brought all the cities together, had some questions, some uncertainties that we went through. And at the end of the day, we had this thing that's now called skip. And it was a tremendous accomplishment. Mayor Bacchus is the chair of skip and you know, the executive committee board. And you know, as we go through and look at the work that is being done and the strides that have gone forward with Angela's leading the helm with this, we're moving quickly. And we're not quite the, the Regional Coalition for Housing yet, which is Arch on the east side. But I got to tell you with the work that Angela's doing and all the partner cities together, we're soon going to be up on top of that with Arch and do the things we need to do to get our housing moving forward and to make up some of those losses that we've had. And as we've all heard and we continue to say, that continued preservation of existing housing and to keep people housed overall. So Angela, great work. Thank you again for all your presentations. And see you at the next Affordable Housing Committee meeting as well as others as well. So appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we're at the end. We have no municipal service focus area discussions either this evening. So do we have any other discussion items? All right. Any new business? Music to my ears. Okay, council, thank you very much for your presentations, your patience. We are now adjourned. Have a great evening.